Has she never seen the management?
Good evening. Oh, I can't see. Welcome to this I O Township Board of Trustees meeting, November 12th at 7:00 P. M. And an announcement, our live stream is not working properly right now. So anyone, hopefully you can hear us, log in by Zoom and you'll be able to view the the meeting and also participate under public comments. Oh, one other thing, and Trustee Reed, thank you for this this mention in the minutes, but we do have a deputy present and for the meetings. And I just want to let everybody know that the deputy's presence is for the protection of both the board and the public, and it's not to limit participation in any way. And if we could just turn the ringers off on our phone to avoid distraction, please. I, yeah, I have been forgetting to do that myself. Okay, Clerk Flintoff, could you call the role, please?
Carrie?
Present.
April?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brand?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Reiser?
Present. I'm Mr. Lake.
Also present, Office Coordinator Christie Akin and Township Attorney Mariah Think.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes requested, Clerk Flintoff?
Um, yes, I wanted to note payment of the bills. The proposed bills for payment were uploaded late today. If the board would like to remove it from consent so they have time to review, we could do that. I might, or if the board's comfortable keeping it on consent, you can do that. It's it's prepared in the exact same way through our policy. The only difference is that I was preparing it and so was a little behind since we've been short staffed in the election enough.
Okay.
I would suggest.
Trustee Reed?
Yeah, I would suggest we, if agreeable, we move N1 to consent agenda.
I would support that.
Okay, Treasury April, do you have anything? Trustee Brand? Changes for the agenda.
I would suggest.
Wait. Yeah, please. When you're called, everyone?
I do.
Thank you.
I would like to add an agenda item to discuss a legal memo going to close session.
At the, where? N6?
Sure. And I just wanted clarity on the payment of the bills. I'm, I'll just propose to move it off consent if the board wants it. I just wanted to.
It's the board.
Okay, so let's, let's move K1 off consent if that's okay.
And if I may, I just wanted for clarity, N1 is the renewal of the tree more ecology and land services contract.
Okay, Trust, Clerk Flintoff, where are you proposing K1?
Would it be okay if we did K1 at the top of new business?
Sure.
It, it should be quick. I just want the board to have time. And thank you for your accommodation. Our finance director is on her second day getting settled. And I, I would support Kathleen's motion. My understanding is our attorneys provide prepared attorney-client privileged materials, and I'd like to add it at the end to go into closed session pursuant to statute.
Trustee Noel, did you have any changes? Trustee Reiser?
I would suggest putting N2, the managing funds for the connecting communities grant, into consent. And N5, approval of claim for payment of attorney fees into consent.
No, I just, I do not support that.
The N2 or the N2 and the? Neither? Okay. Would there be support for moving N3, the two full-time regular staff into parks into consent?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so what we have is K1 under new business before N1. And, and? N1 to consent on, well, I guess case K8? Just, or N1 under K7? And then we have N6, legal memo to go into closed session. And that was it, right? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Support by Reiser.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted, the amended agenda is adopted, 7-0. Okay, declaration of conflict. Anyone other than myself? Okay, so I am requesting to recuse myself from N5, possible action approval of claim for payment for attorney fees related to case 2024-24F3-0828-FY.
And I will view, be allowed to, you know, abstain from voting or recuse yourself from voting?
Correct.
Yeah, I would support, I would make that motion if that's necessary.
And is there support?
Support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 F5, correspondence is received. This is. Any comments? Okay. Moving on to, we don't have special topics tonight, public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak to the Board of Trustees for up to five minutes on any matter, and we begin with anyone present, so please come up to the table where the microphone is. Christie, you have the time timer?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
Okay, so Township President, you all have the letter, I just saw it next to the agenda, from Stephen Parish of the University of Michigan. Did you all get that?
Yeah.
Is it in the agenda packet?
No, we just received the.
December 1st, there is a here on River of Water Shit Council meeting here in Township Hall. Could we please put it on Zoom and make it accessible to the larger community? Would that be possible to add it to the, to the, to the, to the, to the, to the?
I think they're using our room.
Yes, I understand that the watershed council would prefer people to come in person. It's interactive. It doesn't play well on Zoom. I just got that information from the planning commi- commission on Monday from our representative.
And you, I believe it would be best to put it on Zoom so that those who can't come in person can at least participate through the.
It's not our work either, but it's not our, it's up to you, Christie.
If that works out, please make it possible. I just, we started out last week with 252 pages, then Monday we went to 271 pages for the agenda packet, then today is 292. What was added? I think minutes on Monday.
Communications from the supervisor were added at her request at about 5:00 P. M. tonight. I added the claims for payment as noted. Christie added a report from John Reiser and David Reed regarding GCSI.
So, what's that?
But we hold responses until, in the order of our agenda.
And please do not speak unless you're called. Okay, go ahead. Then.
That's unfortunate, I prefer we can actually have the conversation. Just after last board meeting, you said that the large number of items in the consent agenda represented a great, represented great preparation by the team. Do you remember how many dozen times you were prevented from removing items from the consent agenda in the previous board? Do you remember how many dirty tricks were hidden in consent agenda during those years? So just because an item is in the consent agenda doesn't necessarily mean it's good preparation. The consent agenda item for extra deputy coverage at meetings is not an example of good preparation. On tonight's agenda, item N4 should more accurately be labeled dirty trick number 16. I find it extremely ironic you're trying to do the Gillian, what Hathaway did to Jess all those years ago. Remember when you removed her control of your own pleasure? Remember the two lawsuits that resulted? Remember the outrage of residents over his interference with their statutory duties? Now it looks like Jess and Kathleen are doing the exact same thing. Why? Whether you try to use different, a different word to describe the action or not, the effect is the same. Moderator or facilitator are the same thing. You can all word salad with the best of them, but the impact is the same. Remember to remove statutory duties of the supervisor to moderate meetings. Fortunately, state law has, the state has a law on the books that counters your efforts. So once again, diminish Gillian's authority to run the meeting. And at the last meeting, Christie, you gave a, a report on what was going on with the HCC system, and I assumed that you were the person to ask about whether or not the grant funding had come through. I apologized and when I asked that question, just reminded the board not to respond. And I was not, I was not trying to trap you. That was an honest question, trying to find out about the status of the grants. Ryan, thank you very much for letting us know about the federal grant and the state grant. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Rob.
Anyone else present? Would like to speak for public comments?
I'm Liz Weis, Township President and, which, co-chair of the Land Preservation. You walked a little bit ahead of me today by putting in N1, the consent agenda. I wanted to bring to the board's attention that the model motion states that the contract will be renewed under the same terms and conditions as the current agreement. Mr. Alonick for 2026 has raised his project work rate by $5 an hour from $120 to $125 an hour for all his township clients. I would ask that the board authorize the township attorney and make that change or change the provision. And on a separate note, I would like to share my support for the permanent parts employees. Just give a shout out to the parts employees as some of them have done a fantastic job of maintaining our parts and removing invasives. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Sorry for my, I'm learning already with the process, I'm like a first time comer. I'm not Township President. I've been in communication with Mr. Murphy, about agenda item N2. It's concerning the pathway on, for the intersection of South Churchill Road and Oak Valley Drive. So we are a bunch of concerned residents in the area. The popu- the area has become pretty populated in the last couple of years. And I myself is really concerned as a parent, because my, my child is here with me today. He's really unable to walk out of our subdivision to the library, to any public infrastructure. And I did contact the Washington County about whether we can install a safety light, even like, to get into Russell Street safely. And the response is they would be happy to do that. However, in order for them to even consider the installation of the pedestrian light, there needs to be a sidewalk. Otherwise, there's no way for the pedestrian to safely waiting for, for them to cross. So here I am today. I really appreciate Township for being so responsive. I can't tell you how many different emails I've been receiving since I submitted that initial request. So I'm here today to express my appreciation and support of this possible action photo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know, it was Jamie, I live on 7925 South Churchill Road. And I'm here today about the valley again. Sorry to bother you, but I'll start right now. Okay, this is supposed to be a little side hustle business for making money with the farmers. Kelly would promise me they have only two parties per month. She said they'd be little parties. Well, the part, base price for a party start on $25,000 a month, a party. And she makes $50,000 a month. I think that's pretty fair enough for guys to endure that, if she does it twice a month. But, and she's making enough money, she's gonna make it. I want to be certified to your standards, so I'm gonna take readings from, so you'll take my readings more serious. When Kelly's employees use a Fisher Price detective app on his phone, you guys seem that, you guys, you guys thought it was all right. You guys took readings every week. Now that Kelly has found a fear card, it's working pretty good for her. After I called the police on her, she called the police, this is happened, she called the police on me. But for me, I get, I get, I get three police cars pull up in front of my house, meeting up in front of my, in front of my house. Then they pull up my driveway with their lights on and stuff. They start a police in my house with flashlights, looking around, they're just doing their job. I come up walking up my driveway with my hands up, my hands up, they won't get shot. And they had their flashlights up my face, I get surrounded. Then they talk to me for a while, then they know that, you know, then they, then they know I'm all right. They're just doing their job. They were very nice after that. A week later, I called them again for the same thing. The doors are open, the sound was over the limit. The officer was very cool, because they know what's going on now. He told me to get ahold of Jan. I told him I didn't want to get ahold of Jan from my township, because, you know, the town, because the South Township are doing their own job. Jan's cool, she don't have to get in all this stuff. I don't want to bother her. So this, this crazy stuff just keeps going on, because Kelly, because Kelly don't want to do mediation, that's why she's doing all this stuff. She walks in front of my house, she walks in front of my property, she walks on my property. I, 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 her grandkids are playing right in front of me on the, you know, right on the street, right by me. She's playing, um, she, she comes, they're unattended, there's no people around, like I'm, like I'm dangerous. It's so stupid. She came, she came storming at me a couple of weeks ago, man with an angry face, pissed off, she chewed me out. I pulled out my phone to take a picture of her. She took off like, like I had a can of Rager in my hand. I mean, because she didn't want to take a picture, because she's saying she's scared, but she really not. It's all wonderful shit. So I want you guys to understand, the Kelly sent her employee down in the street to assault me. He's about 100 pounds bigger than me. I was shocked, this guy tried to rough me. We had got, we got an altercation out, out in the middle of the road. When Kelly came out to the side of the road, wanted to talk to me, I was walking to where the employee, our employee was, was, was up on me the whole time trying to start something. After, after Kelly's foolish conversation, it was, she was at like 11 o'clock, I mean, the guy was like 12 o'clock in my face. She had her employee in my face telling me he's gonna knock the fuck out of me, knock my fucking teeth out of me.
Jamie, Jamie, I'm sorry to interrupt, and you certainly have a constitutional right to say anything. Certainly, I just want to be cognizant that we have a child present, we have a child present. Just ask if you could be cognizant, okay? Thank you.
We got rough on me, so, so anyway, she stood, she stood there right next to him, didn't say anything. She wanted, she wanted to get me in trouble. She didn't say nothing, but she didn't, that's her employee. She didn't tell him to stop. I'm already done. Anyway, she said, so she lied to the court and said that she did not, this did not happen. But, but she forgot about one thing, her manager was right there too. He seemed to be a good guy. I'll make it a bet that he won't lie for Kelly. Plus, that told me that he knew that I wouldn't hurt Kelly, and he would, if I, he would let me come over if I wasn't protesting anymore, and I did what they wanted me to do, that they would just have me come over for dinner, and it was no big deal. Plus, Kelly and Ed have not been at the parties. They go somewhere else, they leave the premises, they supposed to be there at their house. And then sometime, because they have people running their house, or in some of their house partying. And sometimes they stay in the, in the woodshed or barn or whatever in the backyard, they hang out by the dumpsters. But, uh, so, but I guarantee you, if I did all this kind of stuff, that you guys, you guys, I know, I know you guys wouldn't let me get away with this. And that, that's, that's all I'm saying. I mean, these guys never do what they supposed to do, and nothing happens. And I gotta keep coming down here and keep coming down here. All they want to do is go to mediation. I want you guys, and I want Kelly and Ed to come to mediation, and we need to work something out. They don't need to have, I don't need, I don't need a, a party going on at, at 11 o'clock at night, you know, on Sunday. So, you know what I'm saying? I just, I just want, I just, we just gotta get this thing done.
Okay, well, thank you, Jamie.
I got 21 seconds?
Is it, I can't see.
Okay.
David's, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. I just, it ain't gonna get better. Kelly, Kelly, she's crooked Kelly. She's not, she's not gonna tell you guys the truth. She ain't gonna do what she's supposed to do. She never does. And she's right now, she's trying to set herself up, so, because, so she's gonna try to sell the business, I think she's getting tired of it. And she's trying to make something so someone lived in them in the garage. There we go.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Thank you.
I was, uh, thanks a lot. Have a good day, you guys.
I thought the red was in the minus. Okay, so he does have a. And then, okay, thank you. Okay, oh, hi.
I read it came up.
Yeah, you're fine, I just went to say, come on up, and you were there. Thank you.
I'm Rita Glenn Thornt, 56, 51, sidebar. Um, I just want to put in a word for, you know, Murphy's gonna be talking about this full-time regular staff during the winter that she would like to bring on board, and it's, you know, so far, yeah. But anyway, you know, this time of the year, the winter is one of the best times to do invasive plant removal. But one thing, you don't have all the poison ivy, the ticks are, sun is below 40 degrees, the ticks are not gonna bother you. But also, it's, it's just an excellent time to get a lot of this stuff done. And all the parks that I know of, the county parks and, and city parks, they have staff that work in the winter removing invasives, because it is such a big job. And it's almost impossible to do it all in the summer. It's just, it's just impossible. So I'm hoping that this board will listen to what she's got to say and really understand that this would be so helpful to the parks and moves them along for next summer. It's just impossible to get all that work done in the summer. There are too many things that prevent them from working like they can in the winter. This is an excellent time to do this. So, and I'm sure there's other things that they'll be doing, but that is a really big project, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present for public comments?
Hello?
Hey, Darryl.
I'm Darryl Burkhart, and I was originally gonna be here to advocate for N1 item, but that's moved to consent. So I would like to talk about the full-time positions for the Parks Department. As someone who has worked for Parks Department at Larama County Open Lands Parks, I'm very aware of the many diverse tasks and demands that are placed on managing parks. And I've always been a bit astonished that I O Township has only had one full-time person trying to do, handle all of those responsibilities. And so I'm very encouraged to see that Murphy is asking for additional staff, and I strongly advocate for that. It's a huge job, there are many dimensions to it, and it is a full-year job, and it requires more than one person to really do them all effectively, particularly as our vision expands and the workload increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peace, Darryl.
Anyone present? No. Christie?
Yes. First up is David Crockett, followed by Roy Townsend. Go ahead, David.
Hello, this is Dave Crockett. I am a I O Township resident and a member of the PPP community. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, and I just, I'm also here to speak in, in favor of the full-time regular staff for the Parks Department. As, as people have said, it's lots of work, it's year-round work, and with, with the full-time staff, we can get some continuity, continuity of, you know, people will know what's going on. I've really seen the difference this summer with having the people working in the parks. I've actually gotten to do a couple of workdays with them and observed all that they're doing, how hard they're working. And is adding more areas and adding more, more, more work for Murphy, it's impossible for one person to get this all done. So I just want to be, once again, strongly in favor of the full-time staff for the Parks Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Next up is Roy Townsend. Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Roy Townsend, co-chair, I was Rita on the Parks Passway and Preserves Committee, and I'd just like to do the same thing, advocate for N3, which is hiring more staff. I mean, Murphy's doing a great job, and this summer, they got a lot done with the four people. But if you just keep hiring, you know, summer people are, you know, working for six months, we're really never gonna catch up. And I think when, you know, the residents voted for the millage, whatever, three or four years ago, 77% of people supported that millage, and they want our parks and preserves actually taken care of. And Murphy does a great job, but she can't be out in the field doing, taking care of all that stuff. So I think, you know, had it being two people year-round, and then two people next summer, working for six months, we can finally start making some progress. But this summer, like I agree with David and Rita, we've been out there, we've had some volunteer days, and we've been out there helping them out, and they've really done a great job, you know, made some progress, but the only way to stay ahead of it is have some people that work year-round, and, you know, we can plan stuff out better, and you make some long-range plans rather than just like, you know, putting together every summer, like, okay, this is what we're gonna do this summer, then the next summer, next summer, let's, let's look some long-term planning. And I think that's what Murphy's really been successful in doing, and not knowing that, all the projects she's able to accomplish on this past year, she's managing a lot of projects, it really doesn't, she needs people in the field doing the work. So I just advocate for passing of N3, which is hiring two full-time staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
All right. Uh, next up is Jonathan Gremer, followed by Pam Boyd. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Wonderful. Hey, I also wanted to voice my support for N3 and hiring additional staff so Murphy can focus on being a director while the work gets done. The invasive species, the comment about, Rita's comment about attacking invasive species this time of year is accurate, and having more volunteer periods, time for her to plan more volunteer periods could go a long way. I'd like to get involved. So thank you for considering that, and have a great night.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan. Next up is Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Pam.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a I O resident, I O community newsletter, I O government watchdog. My public comments tonight are regarding my FOIA request originally dated May 25th, 2025. On June 15th, 2025, Jessica responded that she was granting a partial request to my FOIA and that this request, excuse me, will be fulfilled within a reasonable amount of time. It has now been 150 days or almost five months since the date of that last correspondence. I still do not have that information. I ask this board again, what is your definition of reasonable amount of time for an approved FOIA request to be returned to a resident? This board wholeheartedly gave the clerk the job of FOIAs that she had fought so hard to regain in its first board meeting in November of 2024. Is she now too busy to do this job? Why can't she complete a FOIA request that has been partially granted? Can someone else do this task? Maybe the deputy clerk? Since the clerk clearly is not taking the job of FOIA coordinator seriously, I ask that you remove her and give this important job to someone who will follow the law. The Freedom of Information Act is clear and states that I am entitled to information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts of those who represent me. It doesn't say the FOIA coordinator can get to it when she feels like it. In closing, I want to thank Supervisor Carrie for approving my FOIA appeal. However, because no further communication has happened, I see the approval as words with no teeth and at this point feels meaningless. And, and one little P.S. After I wrote my, my notes for this evening, I decided to start calling townships in other counties. And talking to the clerk and, and asking what is their priority? What is, what is their procedure? And they've got some good procedures, and they were really shocked at what's going on in our township. So, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Hands up?
There are no hands, right?
Okay. If we could. If we could, um. Yes, but for board member response? All right. For correction to the, the agenda. Oh, sure.
I, I had moved to take N one to consent. But based on information heard tonight, I think we need to pay with, correct the, the contract and put it back in consent on eleven-twenty-five. Good, the, the rate is wrong. And, and the one we're about to approve is rate is incorrect. We need to correct this rate and put it back on consent next.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
Yes, like that.
Um, well, there was a, I heard two voices at the same time.
Supported.
Oh, I guess, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I would just clarify, it'd be great to have a fully proposed contract, whatever is proposed. This is just last year.
Yeah, actually.
Apparently, I believe we're proposing the same one. It sounds like very true. Yeah, just asking for something different. So I just don't wanna leave something small like this. I don't wanna direct our office coordinator and turn it about the direction.
Okay.
We get it.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's, uh, this is board member response time. This is time for the board members or their designees to follow up concerning public comments. Not sure what it does, it means. Start with trustee Ryzer, do you have a board member response?
No, thank you.
Trustee Noel? Trustee Brandt?
No.
Treasurer April?
Uh, just one clarification, as you were just asking. The deputy treasurer and deputy clerk can attend board meetings, but they can't vote, so that could be a designate.
That's true.
That's all. Thank you.
Forgot about them.
Yeah, thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
Um, no.
Trustee Reed?
Oh, no.
No, okay. Thank you for that. Um, approval of the minutes, um, approval number of J one, approval of minutes of the October fourteen, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Can I? Here, this is right in front of me. Are there any corrections, changes, deletions?
I vote the minutes as presented for the meeting of October twenty-eighth.
Is there support?
Yeah.
If that was Reed, you have one more chance in a minute. All in favor of approve or adopt, adopting the minutes for October twenty, or fourteenth, sorry. Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute.
Aye.
It says October fourteenth on the agenda. Hold on a second.
No, it does not.
Um, possible action, approval of minutes of the October fourteen, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, um, a typo when, when we first published it and somebody brought it to my attention and I corrected it with the hour.
Oh, so I printed it before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was just a typo.
Okay. All right, October twenty-eighth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then possible action, approval of minutes of the October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five special meeting minutes or, um. Yeah, this is a special meeting. Is there, are there changes?
I would move their approval.
Okay.
On board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Seven zero.
I would move consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda adopted. Yeah, onto regular, regular and special reports, L one, uh, regular reports from. Is there something you need to add?
I don't know. You need contracts, because Rob's always prepared. You need contracts.
Thank you. Okay, regular reports.
I have a couple of things. Uh, the supervisor is first here. So I attended, um, a couple of meetings, lots of meetings, but on November fourth, I attended the Washtenaw County Road Commission Board Meeting, because as everyone knows, the state approved their budget, and there's a lot of money going to roads. So I wanted to have more detail, because we have a road advisory committee and we have roads. But, um, the only thing, there's, they do have some detail, but they're not gonna know exactly what those details are for, for a couple of months. And the funding for that, they won't even see until March. So this next couple of, they said the next couple of months, they will actually be, and they won't have as much money because of the overlap with their fiscal year and the state's fiscal year. So this was also, um. Well, I mean, there's, there's a little bit more detail than there was before, but not as much as what we had hoped. So, um, the gas tax, the, the, um, sales tax is removed from the, the gas, but now there will be a twenty cent increase for the gas tax. And I'm not, I didn't get a chance to ask if that was per gallon or whatever. There's, there will be a neighborhood roads fund, and they don't have all the details on that. And then the wholesale marijuana tax, there's, there will be twenty-four percent um, going for neighborhood roads. However, that is being challenged, and there's some legal issues with that. So more to come later. Um, and that was also, I also attended the, um, well, it's a supervisor's meeting that Diane O'Connell, the Ann Arbor Township Supervisor, she hosts, and it's not always once a month, but there was the senior transportation millage that was passed. So she wanted, um, she brought in the Jewish Family Services, WAVE, and the People's Express to talk about this, this really, um, great millage that was passed. And so any, anybody sixty and over can use the, um, the services for free. The Jewish Family Services in WAVE cover our area, or the People's Express is mostly the west or the east side of Washtenaw County. And then Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. So anybody that needs transportation, contact either one, and they will set you up. And I heard that there was a, um, a lot of people that were calling, so you may, may take a little bit for them to return your call, but that's okay. Jewish Family Services also, as you know, we've had, um, issues at the, the federal level with SNAP. And then also, you know, and I think that's getting worked out. However, they do, um, they did, they do have a list of Ann Arbor Food Assistant Resources. So anybody that is in need, they can, they can go to this, um, list, and it's quite extensive. I did download it, and I would request that the Township Board approve for that to be on our, on our website for anybody that needs that. Okay.
And in the newsletter.
And the newsletter? Yeah. Well, it's, yeah, we can figure, figure out how to in, include it. Um, it is a Excel file, which is interesting. So, um, and then Representative Jason Morgan was there, and he also reiterated what the Washtenaw County Road Commission said, that there's a lot of details with the road funding that needs to be hashed out before they can share those details. Um, yeah, so that, that's it for.
I have a question about your report. Um, you informed the board that Scioto Township, uh, is to receive one million dollars for roads that is somehow being allocated through the county. I don't know if that's Washtenaw County or the Road Commission. Do you have details about what that entails?
Well, this, yes. This has to do with, um, a year ago, thank you, Kathleen, or trustee Brandt, that you found that in the state budget, and everybody was confused, the one million dollars for Scio Roads. And nobody had heard where that came from. Happened to be a developer, went through a lobbyist and was able to, um, have that appropriated. However, thank you, um, Clerk Flintoff for contacting Carrie Reingans, was it? And they weren't aware. So she, Carrie worked, um, Carrie, um, Representative Reingans and Senator Sue Shink, they worked together to figure out that whole thing. And it happened that it was, it was meant for Jackson Road, that project was completed. By law, they cannot appropriate money for something that was already done. So that was one thing. Um, the other is they're also working on some, some bills or laws or whatever, so that developers cannot use state funding for their projects. But that's in the works, that's coming down. So they decided to allocate that money to Scioto Township Roads, but it goes through the Washtenaw County Road Commission. We do not have a say where that money will be spent. I am planting seeds for some of our roads, and Park Road is one of them. So we'll see what they will do. But it doesn't come to us directly for us to spend.
Do we have anything in writing that commits this to us?
It's in the budget. The state budget.
I had something. I talked to our GCIS, GCSI rep this afternoon about that issue. And, and some other issues. Apparently, Sue Shink made an error in some of what she said to Gillian, it sounds like. She is, they are encouraging her to reach out to the Township Board as a whole. So we will all hear the same explanation from Sue. She'll explain it. Apparently, she feels badly about it. And I told John, no one's gonna hold the defense to her. But just clearer communication with the entire board would be appreciated.
I had two conversations with her in the, because I, after we had this discussion, I reached, or, um, through, I don't know how. Anyways, I reached out to her again. It took her a while to get back with me. And then when she said the same thing. And so that's when I sent it out to the board. And Carrie Reingans' office just, I talked with, um, her assistant today, and I shared with her what Sue said, and she agreed. So there's something going on here.
I relayed what John told me today.
Okay.
I just wanted to judge.
I haven't been part of any of these conversations. I would just say the, the state budget itself says the million is for Washtenaw County. It doesn't say Scioto Township, so I, so I would just put, put that. And it doesn't mean it's not intended for, but it says Washtenaw County. But if it is coming to Scioto Township, um, encourage, um, you, Roads Committee Chris Chang, to include it in our, um, budget and capital planning, because that would go a long way.
Well, but it's not for us to say we're gonna use it on these roads. So the Road Commission has that.
Yeah, ultimately, it'd be their call.
But yeah. Yes.
Great.
Um. Huh, that's, that's interesting. Um, well, they worked on the budget. You know, so I, and I, okay, well, we'll find out. We'll have, I'll reach out to, to Sue again and see if she will write up, um, a letter or something for us.
Um, Treasurer April?
Sure, thank you. Um, so I have two reports attached for the last couple of weeks. I also do have the AATA WAVE letter that Clerk Flintoff prepared and sent over to WAVE and to AAATA. Uh, I also have WAVE's monthly reports, which are due. Um, they are going to be providing those to the board going forward. Uh, it shows you, uh, the level of service that they're providing, as well as the demand for the service within Scioto Township, both for door-to-door, as well as the various routes that they run within the township. Uh, I'm hoping to have some more information from AAATA on that as well. We have a meeting next Thursday uh, for the first Multimodal Transportation Committee, uh, meeting. Uh, we're getting the tax bills, uh, almost done. Those will probably be ready to go out early next week. And have been, uh, staying quite busy, helping, uh, get everything ready and welcoming the new finance director and appreciate everyone's hard work. Thanks.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
Um, yeah, a couple of updates. Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody who worked to make the special election on November fourth possible. Um, we had fifty election inspectors working. Um, a couple of them are here. Thank you, Rita and Liz. We had, uh, twenty-seven point nine percent turnout, so twenty-eight percent turnout. So for a single-issue um, special election, that's actually the highest ever. Um, I know it sounds low, but it's because of the permanent absentee ballot voting. Um, countywide, it was twenty-three percent. Scioto Township was twenty-eight percent. Um, the millage proposal, as you probably know, passed fifty-five percent to forty-five percent. As well, it passed in Scioto Township. I will note, in Precinct Two, it passed by only four votes in Scioto Township. So not, not surprising. Precinct Two typically votes less often for, um, tax increases. It being in the Dexter School District and generally having a lower cost, um, to bear. So thank you to everybody. Special thanks to Anna Christic, um, who worked as a clerk's assistant, first time this year, did fantastic. And to Barb Kalaja, we all put in, um, many hours. So thank you to the entire, um, township team. I also want to, um, note that Nikki Timmons, our finance director, started on Monday, had a holiday yesterday and was back in the office for her second day today. So I want to thank everybody. Yeah, I mean, so pretty much everything's, you know, fixed. So she is, um, uh, off to a great start. I want to thank Belisha King for jumping in, um, to do payroll. I did AP, and we're gonna keep the essential functions going, but we're gonna be, um, reassigning things and look forward to Nikki's recommendations to the board. Um, capital planning is underway. Thanks for everybody who's working on that. And, um, over the next couple of weeks, I'm sure Nikki will be reaching out, um, to each of you when she gets, you know, her computer working and all of the files and things like that. Speaking of computers working, um, we almost have our digital record software installed. Um, thank you to the board for adopting job descriptions for positions we approved last April. We should be recruiting for mid-January um, to start that project. And special thanks to CTC for, um, working hard to get our, our network to where it needs to be. Also, with LASSA, um, we've, as you know, we approved the MOU to take on the cash receiving and the AP. Um, so far, so good. Thanks, Ryan and his team. Um, it's already making a difference for customers. I was so pleased when somebody came to the counter today to pay their LASSA bill, and we were actually able to process it. So um, I think that's a, a small but important improvement for people. That's all.
Great. Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
I think the election wouldn't have gone as smoothly without that receiving board you had.
I want to issue a profound apology for not acknowledging our receiving board, who's, half of which is sitting to my left. Thank you, David, Kristi, Andrea. Really, and Elaine.
Elaine.
Um, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Office. Office Coordinator Aiken, do you have anything to report?
Just a couple of things. I, I just wanted to let everyone know that the HVAC is in full swing, the replacement. So it's, it's a big job, and we're dealing with a little bit of cold, not too bad. We got space heaters humming along. So that started this week, and I also wanted to thank Murphy for, um, the great job out back for phase two of the playground equipment, which is now complete. So if you get a chance, stop out and take a look. And that's all I have for now.
Oh, thank you. All right, and then there is, um, do you have a, oh, you have a report. Okay, so I'm just going down the list here.
To inform the board of, um, it's not related to Galman. It is related to the city of Dexter potential annexation.
Thank you.
And I got a call today from one of the Dexter City Council people. And then I ended up talking to Michelle Anno, Annie, I don't know how you say your last name. And she told me what had happened. At their meeting on Monday, the council voted At their meeting on Monday, the council voted to direct the city manager to develop an agreement with David Lutton and the city of Dexter, an agreement between these two parties for who's going to assume what financial obligations in the process as an annexation goes forward. The formal notice will of request for annexation will follow this. So they don't, they haven't agreed on the request for annexation yet, but it sounds like it's coming. And once this council agrees to this request for annexation, they'll be submitting it to Scio and the State Boundment Commission.
How does that work? Because usually it's we.
Can I ask a question before the annexation? Just the, because Ryan and I looked at the packet just real quick after I got the call from the reporter.
Um, and the proposed resol, so my question is, did they actually adopt a resolution on Monday? Okay, because they said they were going to send a copy to us.
They were going to send a copy of the final approval of annexation is what she said to me. And the resolution from the packet was changed a little bit.
So it includes the million dollar contribution from Dave Lutton?
I'm assuming it does, but I, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I know it was changed a little bit.
Thank you.
Oh, with the, in a normal or um a four twenty-five agreement?
We don't have a four twenty-five.
Right, but usually it's, you come together and you have uh negotiations or whatever, but with, or.
There would be agreed upon revenue share in a four twenty-five agreement.
But with this, it's basically here, we're annexing the land and there's no negotiation?
Well, we haven't said whether, we may be opposing it.
We haven't taken a position.
Yeah, we haven't taken a position yet. And we've got other issues that we're going to have to discuss um related to this potential well as soon as we have the report. So we may not be supporting the annexations is what I'm saying. We just don't know yet. We need more information.
Wondering what the, that type of process is because they, you know, it's, it's different.
Typically, there is revenue sharing is I understand it.
With a four twenty-five?
Yes, but usually in, in a situation like this, when a city is attempting to annex from like essentially an island in a township, they often do negotiate with the members of the township board on a mutually acceptable agreement with, for revenue sharing.
Right, if, if they can't uh, it, it, you know, it depends on how big the property is, right? Um, and if they can't agree to some other way to do it, but there is, there is such thing as hostile and influential. Still has to get approval by the State Boundment Commission.
Yeah. And I, I, I gotta say.
Too, I mean, we still have a, the many hands process has preliminary approval. There's a application before the LPC that Dave Lutton has. I mean, these things are not unconnected in my mind. I mean, I think we want the report back from the um expert that we hired regarding the impact of, you know, any well on, you know, the, the natural environment. I mean, I, I do think it's telling that, you know, Dexter is having to go outside of Dexter to support their own infrastructure.
Trustee Noel, when is that report due?
We don't have a due date.
Oh.
We're still reviewing the tunes. The well locks for all the drinking water wells in the area.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or? Okay, thank you for that report. Any other report?
Oh, I just.
Trustee, oh, sorry, go ahead. Trustee Brand?
I have a report from the Planning Commission. On Monday, a home builder um did a presentation to the Planning Commission on on a property at the corner of Jackson and, and Parker. It just has a small piece on Jackson Road, that corner is not part of it. It is um abutting um I ninety-four. The, it's called Ember Grove. I believe it's two hundred and fifty-six units. They're asking for a PUD agreement.
Thank you.
Can I add a question on that?
Yes.
How far short, if at all, um does our water and sewer go to the proposed development?
But my understanding was I heard on Monday night and we would have to verify this the developer is proposing extending the water main to their property. And I don't know if that includes sewer, if they need to. Does it say anything about the sewer?
Doesn't say.
Okay. But they intend to be on municipal water and sewer?
Water. We don't know yet about sewer.
Okay. I'll buy that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Treasury April, is this regards?
I could share regarding that. The sewer main doesn't go down that far.
I didn't think so.
So they, they want it, but it's not there.
Sewer option would be onsite sewer.
Oh, boy. What are we gonna do about that?
Well, that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, can, is, is there a option to further limit? Or I'd like to talk about that at a future board meeting, further limiting those community wastewater treatment plants.
Clerk Flintoff, you had something else?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had a question.
I wanted to, I wanted to thank Mark Perry and Tom Off for their analysis of complaints. Um, it was helpful to kind of look at the complaints from priority waste over time. Um, it's in our written reports. And so I just wanted to um ask when we expect the board to next be taking up priority waste? If we know.
Um, the next board meeting?
November twenty-fifth?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, any other reports? I think we're good. Um, all right. Oh, or comments? Yeah. Scribbled all over here. Yeah, oh yes, um the L two information GCSI report and proposed committee charge. Um, trustee um Reed, is that from you or?
Um, they're from John.
Okay. Okay, who would like to take the lead on this?
Those guys.
You want to start?
You guys, go ahead, because you did most of it.
We met, we had a conversation with John. We talked about how we might be able to utilize them. That spelled out kind of in the uh first section that I talked about. Um, we need, we need to kind of find out what they can do for us with respect to advocacy as well as um lobbying for pots of money when they become available consistent with our capital movement plan and consistent with the directives that we have uh provided them. And uh, uh, on the last page, uh David put together a proposed uh outline of a committee um in, how we would, how would we would uh staff that committee or who would constitute, whether it's one or two of the Board of Trustees, the Operations Director or their designated representative, the Finance Director potentially. So we, we, we kind of, kind of need to kind of talk amongst ourselves, settle on how do we want to call the desires of the township with respect to legislation as well as funding opportunities? And then communicate that to um GCSI and follow up on it. So that's, that's, David, I don't want to speak for you. I know you put that together, but that's kind of my recollection of the big picture.
Thank you, you speak much. I have a hard time speaking right now, but thank you for that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else?
When is it coming before the board for action?
And, and, and that's what's my next point. Uh, we can bring something together as an action item, but I think it would be nice if we kind of had some discussions about, about what we're expecting uh from the committee, what we, how we want the committee to be constituted, how they should report back. Um, who, who should, who should be on the committee and how, and how do they, so.
This charge was just um an example and I, we don't necessarily mean that this is what it has to be, but this was a sample that um at least I thought would be a good selection of people to be on the committee. Um, and I don't think it needs to be anything really big. Three members seems to be appropriate, but um that's up to, for us as a board to decide. This was just a suggestion.
So I, I repeat my question, when is it coming before the board? I don't understand what you said about people will talk about it as the board or your subcommittee. This is languished for a while.
For, for an action item to?
Are you saying you want to see it soon as an action item?
Well, I, I'm saying that we, we did a month to month budget approval for this, which was for six months, which is.
Expired.
Expired. And, uh, we don't, we don't have, we don't have consensus on engaging with GCSI.
Then we need to discuss it.
Yep.
And, and like to your question, one of us could say I move that we adopt the uh GCSI Advisory Committee as presented by trustee Reed, although in those in favor. We could do that tonight, but rather than do that tonight, I, I think David and I, maybe Kathy too, we want to hear from you what, what, what you think the committee should do.
Clerk Flintoff's here.
So I think, I, I do think, I, I appreciate this work. Um, I'm seeing kind of three things that this board is being asked to discuss or act on at a future meeting. So the item that was tabled was the proposed contract from GCSI. So that, that is, is not before us. And I know, I, I hope will come before the board for an up or down vote soon. But the, the second item, the memo, seems to be like the beginning of kind of a policy platform or things that GCSI might do for us, which is what we had discussed, is like fleshing out that scope of work for GCSI, is that right?
Well, I think we wanted, you guys wanted um definition of a committee charge.
Yes, yeah, and there was the I, it, yeah, that wasn't, I, I know that idea came up too, was a, a committee charge, which is the third thing. So I think it's, it's really good to have all of this um together. When I see that memo read GCSI lobbying services, this memo seems much more like kind of what's our state policy? You know, like state, like these may be activities we take on, we go directly to our reps for, we rely on GCSI or another lobbyist for. This seems to be a really good start um to what we want to do. I, questions about page two of the memo? Because when we actually get the reports from GCSI, was it uh, and Ryan, you may remember these numbers better than I, but I think it's what, like thirty-three hundred a month? Flat, no matter what they do. And then every year, you know, we sign off on the disclosures about lobbying services and they give the report of how much they've actually spent on lobbying services. And it's a fraction, it's like ten percent of that amount.
Lead for the record, it was seven or eight percent?
Seven or eight percent. So in terms of the three things that they can do, the capital improvement projects, that seems like something that they've been able to do. The direct advocacy and, and legislative monitoring, that seems like something they could do. But can you talk a little more about what direct advocacy GCSI could do? Like what an example of that might look like on a policy besides just asking for money?
Well, I would think that that would be reaching out to state agencies that, that on issues important to Scio. Taking a step back, for me, the question is, is do we want to have a lobbyist? Because I don't know that there's unanimity on this board that we should have a lobbyist at all.
Agreed.
And, and, and so, and if we, do we want to have a lobbyist? Should it continue to be GCSI? Because there are others out there. So are we going to have a lobbyist? Is it going to be GCSI? And then what the hell do they want us to do? What do we want them to do for us? And how do, how do we communicate our desires to them? And how do we get that feedback to the, to the board? Other than the, the, this wrote report that probably other townships and municipalities get as well. No, but so, so it's like, like I don't want to come up with a fancy policy or work, overwork a policy if we don't want a lobbyist.
I have a suggestion. At the next board meeting, why don't you bring or create um an agenda item just with that? Number one, number two. And then if the number one passes, number two passes, then we know where to go from there.
I, I, I'd be curious in hearing co, feedback from this board. Do we want a lobbyist or do we not want a lobbyist? Do we want to like? Yeah, because I, because I, I think, I think that's a, that, that's an inflection point.
Treasury April? Oh, I'm sorry, we.
No, I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done.
I'll, I'll, I'll lay out my, my answer for you so, so we can move on instead of dancing around the, the question. I think lobbyists could be helpful. I'm not sure that, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that everyone has done to get to this point. Specifically page four of this document. Uh, I think the top paragraph, the, the committee uh that's proposed, sort of cleaning up that top paragraph and breaking apart that we want them to do uh state policy work and, you know, be our policy advocate in addition to having a role of trying to find earmarks and, and funding for specific projects. I think breaking those few things out as distinct points would be more helpful. They're kind of mashed together there, which, that's okay. That's why we're here to discuss it. We can break it apart, delineate it. I, I, I think the other thing that comes up to me is, you know, we're in an economy where there's not the money that there has been over the last four years. Um, that's why I'm having a hard time with this. Because I, I, I see, I, I see kind of some people on the board's opinion of, okay, we go in, we're, we're doing this even if it isn't for a result tomorrow or three months from now, it's the result that might come in two or three years. Okay, I, I, I can appreciate that. But on the other hand, it's a bit of an investment and we're not entirely sure that the same power players will be there in two or three years. And it's quite likely that some of them will be different and that some of the work, the investment we make might not get us anywhere. I, I, I don't know. And that's, that's where I struggle with this, especially given that the macroeconomic issues, the political issues, especially at the national level and some of them at the state level. And then I'm looking at us trying to balance our budget, which we unfortunately didn't do this yet. So that, that's, that's where I'm at and hopefully that gives you, gives the folks. I, I, I like the idea of us trying to, to influence policy. I like the idea of us trying to find funding, especially, you know, we have a resident here tonight asking for funding for a project we identified in our CIP that we don't have funding for, or at least not funding identified. I appreciate that GCSI, as one example, could potentially help with that. And I think that's great. Do I think it's worth it? I don't know. That's, that's my concern at this point is I'm not, I haven't fully been sold on it. So yeah, tha, thanks everyone.
Us, you know? Well, I'm a supporter of GCSI. I've seen what they can do in the past. They got a tremendous amount of funding for the ladder truck for this township. And they have a proven track record. It may not be perfect and I agree, the times are tight. But there are never going to be guarantees with a lobbyist. It's, to an extent, you are investing in the future, a hope for the future anyway. Um, there will be no guarantees with any other lobbyist either.
I'm I'm where I was on this um a few months ago when we talked about it. I'm not, I'm I'm still not seeing GCSI um being worth the money. Um, another lobbyist, maybe. Um, I do think that doing the work of building out what our state policy priorities are is important, um regardless of if we go with GCSI, if we go with another lobbyist, if we go with no lobbyist at all. I think that's really important, and I really appreciate that we've started this, because for years we've said we need this. Um, because we know that MTA and all the other associations, MAMC, they don't necessarily represent our interests, particularly on the environment or on um, you know, um, you know, basic needs for our residents. Um, you know, that that's where we really would would need somebody to to raise up um the issues of SIO's concern. Um, but, yeah, I mean, we're we've certainly been going um month to month, um, you know, without a budget on this. I I'm supportive of, you know, uh, developing a a policy priority, a a committee, if that helps move it forward. I guess what what has I the last question I'd say is like, what what can the three of you say about your additional conversations with GCSI that makes you think that they can um do some of this stuff better than they have in the past? The direct advocacy, the legislative monitoring?
I mean, I'll say, I think that with GCSI, you get out of the relationship what you put into it. If you just sit there and wait for them to email you this, then it's you 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 have to meet with them. You have to, you 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 gotta kind of press the flesh with them and say what, let them know what we want. Like, what can you do by way of these uh the this this bill? Or what can you do by way of uh uh of uh th- these funding opportunities? John's going to know what might come up that comports with our CIP, our capital improvement plan. So it's like, it's gonna take some work on our behalf, and by that I mean Kathy Knoll. No, I'm just kidding. No, but I I I meant the the board.
Yeah, yeah.
To to get out of it. And like John, here's 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 our, and we also have to discern among us what we want. We we could have Kathleen Brant having a different priority than 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 Ryan Yake. So what what are our goals? What are our desires? And how do we communicate that? How do we um push them to 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 do these? And how do we bring it back to the board so the board feels that it's money well spent? I mean, that that's my take on it. There there needs to be work done by in a committee. And then, you know, this committee, to David's point, this committee doesn't have to be comprised of the finance director, the operations director. It it could be two board members. It could be, but but it's whoever that committee is has to know what the board itself wants. What are?
I, go ahead. It would seem to me that after we get our capital improvement plan approved this year, we sit down with GSI and say, find us the money for these budgets, basically. Okay, well, they found us money for the truck.
Yeah.
And that was what, half a million dollars?
Yeah.
And we pay them thirty-three hundred dollars, thirty-three thousand a year for a return of half a million. That's pretty good return on our money. But so if we do that and meet with them quarterly, and that's why I was thinking maybe uh these people or their designated, the operations and finance people, meeting with GCSI quarterly, you know, prodding them for for uh pushing for these things, keeping us in front of the the representatives and the senators, et cetera. I think, and if it's not GSI, I have no, I have no desire to have either GSI or G C GCSI or someone else. Maybe we need to do an RFP on our lobbying thing. Um, yeah, and so that we could get maybe a rate of twenty-nine hundred dollars a month instead of thirty-three or whatever.
A lot of seven percent lobbying.
Yeah, you know, a substantial part. I understand these companies have admin costs, you know, I'm cognizant of that.
Seven percent on lobbying is horrifying. Every time we look back.
So.
Hmm, yeah, this is um. Maybe this could, well, yeah, I I see the benefit of having a lobbyist. Um, but having even meeting quarterly, and there's three months that go by. I think that it it really needs, if we're going to utilize them, let's really utilize them. Um, get our money's worth. I mean, not just our money's worth, but also what can benefit the township. And it just, we've been kind of like, oh, here's something that came up, and, you know, we talk with them and they help us, and that's that's it. And then it kind of falls away for a while, but we get to keep getting these bills. So I think that if we're going to do this, we need to do it aggressively. And I'm sure there's still money out there somewhere, and and I know there's other grants and whatnot that they come across. Well, uh, would you be open to bringing this as a an agenda item? And I I like your questions. Start with, do we even want it um a a firm? Or if we do, do then go RFP or, you know, whatever, but.
But but I guess it it for those of us on the board who've had the opportunity to look at it, if there is to be a committee, do you have any interest in being on it or any sense or direction how it should be comprised and what its function are? I don't want to bring something back that doesn't reflect what this body wants.
Well.
I mean, I will, but it'd be nice to get some more direction.
Didn't Trustee Noel volunteer? Um, Trustee Brant?
Yeah, and uh my position has not changed on this. I think I made it pretty clear that I do not see funds coming from the federal level nor the state um to benefit SIO Township. I think that's the reality of the situation, so I don't see us getting any value out of this. And I don't see the point of spending this much money for three years hoping that the funds. Someone made a comment about grants. I don't believe that GCSI is doing anything for us with grants. I don't I don't know where that came from.
I don't think they are.
Yeah, uh, I'm still, I'm still speaking.
Yes, and so is everybody else.
Oh, but I'm the only one in this whole board that has to ask permission.
It's not true. Please finish what you're saying.
And when I do speak, the supervisor mostly interrupts me.
That is not true. Finish what you need to say.
Okay, there she did it again. And my concerns about how this board operates is that I have to ask permission to speak. I get interrupted by the supervisor. When I do speak, the supervisor rebuts my comments, which I stated in the past is uh such a privilege that she gets so much airtime. So now I'm going to finish my comments. So when it comes to the mid the committee charge, I I do not think it's a good idea to put additional effort, work effort on our operations director, and the relationship to finance director didn't make any sense at all. Um, so I I don't uh support um having a committee that has staff on it.
Trustee Reiser, will you bring this to a a future meeting?
Yes, would you like the the next one?
Sure. Uh, my concern is that we are continuing to spend money on GCSI.
Yes, yes.
And we've been in this.
And and.
This is a couple of months ago that we.
Together trustees, Knoll and Reed, and we'll bring back something. Thank you very much.
Clerk Flintoff.
Reach out to one of us if you have any suggestions or directives on how uh we could better use a lobbyist, especially you, Trustee Brant, if we end up having one.
I would I would just say, um, if if you'd be so kind to bring back the contract that we tabled a couple of months ago, um, so we can have an up or down vote on that contract. Um, I will um spend some time on the proposed um committee charge and policy plan. I see this, I do see value in our continuing to define state policy priorities beyond our capital plan, tree plan, budget, um documents like that. I think um it it would be great to have a list of areas that we want to advocate for, but I I see that as independent of if we have a lobbyist or not.
Treasurer April, did you have something else?
Um, I was going to say, I'd like to see this on the next agenda so we can do an up or down and and frankly move on with the the business we have to conduct. I appreciate the work that's been done to date, and we'll see how the vote plays out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on? Okay, uh, nothing under unfinished business, under new business K one, which is payment of the bills.
Sure, um, payment of the bills are before you. The only thing I want to flag, I just want to give the board time to look at it since um the attachment was late arriving. Um, I do just want to flag one one thing we need to improve I in our procurement, um, in our um process. Um, again, I want to thank the finance team, treasury, everybody who works to keep our spending responsible and within what the board has authorized. Um, there are periodically a couple of times a month lifts we need to look at. I think Christie, there was one that we need to look at regarding a a vehicle repair that that got missed in the process, but all of it works quite well. The one thing is um the gas guzzling machines that we're buying. I do think um we've talked about integrating some thing about net zero into our procurement policy, and I think it's time that um we implement something. I'd be happy to take a look with anybody else who's interested in what we could do to get some sort of approval for these significant purchases that go against our carbon neutral resolution. Um, I don't know what else to do. Um, we've done education. Um, we we make suggestions. I think at this point it needs a higher level review, but I don't know what others think.
Treasurer April.
Uh, thank you. I I guess I said two quick questions. I guess the first one, clerk flipped off. I know we had staff members just leave, and there's a renewal of a association membership. Have we considered how that how we might handle that in the future? I don't I don't I don't know.
Yes, it was, it it was renewed before she resigned, and I've I've it's already on my list to reach out and get that transferred.
Okay, very good. And I guess the one other thing I want to make the board aware of, if you look on page four of six, uh, you'll see that there was a Ford F-one-fifteen Lightning Repair Mirror. Um, just to make the board aware, we have had several recent incidences with our vehicles being damaged in different ways. Uh, certainly, I believe they were all accidental, but uh I'd be happy to talk to anyone more about that uh separately. But just wanted to call out to the board's attention that that's that vehicle's second claim so far this calendar year.
And I will just share, I've suggested to Aurora informally any recommendation she have if we need to start requiring driving classes or what for our staff, but it's been um troubling how many fender benders we've had. Hopefully, just a string of bad luck.
Yeah, thank you for bringing these.
Is there a motion to um for the payment of the bills?
I move the bills as presented.
Agreed.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills are approved. Possible action, matching funds for connecting community grants. And um, oh.
Hello.
Parks Director Murphy Harrington.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Does it need to be on? No, okay, I'm fine. Go ahead, okay. Um, so back on July eighth, the board approved um Chris Chang's request to apply the order of communities grant to address a need along SIO Church Road. And we received communication back from the county that they would be happy to provide twenty-five thousand dollars in grant uh money as long as that was to be matched by SIO Township. Chris and I spoke about it, uh, tried to determine if it was an appropriate use of Park's money and decided that based on um the mileage itself, it's appropriate to allocate money towards pathways, and as this is an area of concern for residents due to safety, and because this would offer a chance for a really densely populated area, like the most densely populated area of SIO Township, to access other other communities and other resources such as the Ice Cube, the library, and the shopping center um to the east. And we decided that uh this was the appropriate use of of Park's funds, and that we would like to move forward with that request from the county to match the funds.
Well, thank you. Um, sir, with trustee Reed?
Just by way of clarification, this is a pathway, not a sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
In the way that it's um, there's a kind of like a stubbed sidewalk area that we would be connecting into. And in that case, since we can't just have like a sidewalk and not a pathway, it would look weird. Um, we would taper the pathway down, so it it was aesthetically pleasing to connect it to the sidewalk, but it would itself be a path.
But that would allow the road commission then to put in the cross or the controlled crosswalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Clerk Flintoff?
Sure.
Um, I have uh two two concerns about this. Um, one, one is just simply, and just, this is just for all of us, um, Christie. Um, I know when this came in July, we spent a lot of time on this. I I would just think that at the time that we're applying for a grant, and and nobody needs to answer this, but I think we should have known about a match requirement. And I don't know if that changed, if the rules changed from the county or what, but it seems like if we knew that only we we were told fifty thousand dollar grant, fifty thousand dollar project. Um, now it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant with a twenty-five thousand dollar match. So that that's just kind of, I mean, for the future in terms of, you know, getting things. I mean, this this should not take two board meetings. This should take one board meeting on consent. This this kind of an item is is my my feeling. Um, my concern about this project, it is a a worthy project. I want to confirm, Murphy, this is the same project that's in our CIP, is that right, under Road Five?
If it's Chris's project, I can't attest to that, but as far as I know, under his projects, this was outlined in the capital plan.
Okay, so we have in our capital plan, um, I I think this is it, but I'm not sure. That's what we were talking about before, because I'm not it super familiar. We've had so many different drawings by OHM over the years of things we might do there. So Road Five, SIO Church Road, Oak Valley Drive sidewalk project. I'm just reading from our CIP that we adopted. And we, this was one of the ones where we all identified it as a worthy project. We put it under one oh one with zero dollars as a way to signify that it would be our lowest priority, because we had no realistic identified funding. And and so we had a couple of these projects that we put at zero dollars, simply because we we just didn't have a a realistic um funding source for it. That said, um, I I I appreciate that we we need some projects with drawings ready to go. I'm also aware that that we have a lot of projects. We we over the years, even before your time, Murphy, we've had OHM do a lot of drawings for a lot of projects. The the bridge, um, the over ninety-four, all these different things. And I haven't found that it speeds us getting these projects done. Um, the the second thing I want to say is I, um, well, well, it seems like just twenty-five thousand dollars from the Parks Department isn't much. I imagine the construction would be much more. I imagine the construction would be much more. And, and I am not a proponent of using limited parks funding for sidewalks, pathways. I appreciate there's some ambiguity, you know. I'll defer to the experts on the precise definition of it. But, but that is a populated area. It's not a trail. It's not a pathway. And I really don't think that's what, I remember when we sat here and the board before voting narrowly, three to two to put the parks mileage on the ballot. I remember people speaking out passionately, Alec Jerome, Will Hathaway, people who had worked on it. About making sure it doesn't just become a fund for sidewalk gap filling. And, and so that's my concern with this. And so that's why I'm, I'm not supportive of this allocation of parks funding. I don't think it's a, a, a good use of parks funding. I think it should be funded from the general fund or from another source if we're going to do it. And I will just also remind the board, it was the lowest priority on our capital plan when we have other higher priorities. Thank you.
Trustee Brandt.
Yeah, I, it would have been very helpful to see the letter from the grant, grantee, grantor on what their requirements were. Some information that said they replied and they said, we, we want a match. That's, that's part of the record that I would like to see. I wanted to talk about the memo from OHM, which concerns me. It's, the first sentence says, it is our understanding that the township would like to construct a pathway along the north side of Sio Church Road between Upland Drive and Oak Valley Drive. My concern there is this is, project has not been prioritized. For all the reasons we talked, that were just stated about the capital improvement plan is zero. So we seem to have a disconnect with our township engineer stating that we want to do this when we actually haven't determined. And mostly because we don't have funding for it. So that concerns me. I don't think, since we don't have funding for it, I, I really don't see this need. And we discussed this, that we went, we talked quite a bit about the funding for this. And it, the conclusion was we can apply for it. We don't have to accept the grant. And now this is morphed into, well, someone thinks this is our highest priority. And now it's matching funds and yes, of course, we should do it. But that, that's not the dialogue I recall where we said, we don't have to accept this. So the change, the conditions have changed. I would have seen, liked to see in a record of that. I'm not supportive at this time, simply because we don't have the budget for it.
Trustee.
When we put this on our CIP, we said that it was a placeholder. It was conceptual. I remember those words when we discussed it. It wasn't that it wasn't a priority. It was something we were to think about in the future. So I was supportive before and I'm still supportive of this. I think, I mean, this southeastern corner of the township is the most highly populated part of our township. It's where I live. It's where John lives. There is a need. There is a definite need for improvement. Sidewalks and/or pathways. There, there's a lot of activity that goes on in that area. So I'm saying I would support this. Even if we are just getting preliminary information where I don't know that we're committed to it with this. We would just get preliminary information, get more information and see where we are in the future.
Thank you. Trustee Riser?
And I would say it's not a parks mileage. It's a parks and pathways mileage proposal. Pathways was always part of the, 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 the ask that voters were approving. And it, it says, you know, shall an increase in tax limitation, dot, dot, dot. And they talk about develop and maintain preserves, parks, trails, recreational opportunities. Including a network of non-motorized pathways. A non-motorized pathway is an asphalt pass, pathway can include that. But a network, it goes from one place to the other. The network in this case would be from Pittsfield Township, from the city of Ann Arbor. From potentially Lodi Township to Kensington in Sio Township. That's the network. And then ultimately further west until it goes to Sio Ridge, which is going to connect with Liberty. And which is going to connect with, when the urban crossroads goes in. That there'll be pathways that link Liberty there that'll go into Saginaw Forest, that'll go up Wagner to, 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 to Jackson. And I said it the last time, we've got these major arteries, these pathways into our, into our township. Liberty has a pathway and that's dense up there. Jackson Road has a pathway. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of residential there, but there is some and there's certainly commerce there. We obviously, Mr. Jared Levine's emails point out, we need connectivity up there. Miller, we need a network of non-motorized pathways along Park Road. So there are areas in which our township, we need to step it up on behalf of our residents who walk. On behalf of our residents who recreate by riding bicycles, by jogging. It's, I, I, I think it's a travesty that when Kensington went in, they didn't at least connect the pathway or the sidewalk to the corner there where people could get safely into Ann Arbor, Pioneer High School, football games. Can get safely into the Ice Cube, get safely in, into the library and then further down the road. This is something that's gonna, we're gonna have to bite this bullet someday. And I think just like where our Park Road and to get the engineering done so that we can ask GCSI. So that we can ask, we can seek out other fund where we can maybe set aside general fund or more parks and pathways mileage money for it. I, I, I'm a strong proponent of this, not only because I'm down there, but I, I have seen, I have seen people walking in the darkness in winter. And, and it's just not safe. And, and, and Park Road's not going to be safe either. So this is one of problem areas that our residents deserve the safety. So I'm going to support this very hard because it's part of the Parks and Pathways Village vision.
Okay, thank you. I have not spoke yet. So. Yes, I know there's some hotspots in the township, Park Road. The Sio Church, the Dexter, Ann Arbor. And I, I am in favor of this and the reason why is because, well, we could, we could apply for these grants. We may not even get the grant. But if we did, this will fund for engineering plans. And those we cannot have, we cannot go out for other grants or other sources of funding like SEMCOG or whatnot without having a plan. And engineering plans, that, that could be part of the application to those other entities. And I believe that SEMCOG does have grants for, for funding the construction, maybe not total, but you know, that, but we're not going to be able to do that unless we do have some, some engineering plans. And unless the road commission on Sio Church, we have, we're just talking about that. Unless the road commission does something drastic to that area. The engineering plans aren't going to change, at least I can't see why they would. So this is something that we could have there and eventually it's going to happen. We have too many people and Tina, I believe, that was here. She's not the only one from that area that has contacted us regarding this area. And also Jan Godak of Lodi Township and I believe Pittsfield Township had letters of support. And I had, you know, earlier today talking about this, I was thinking, well, maybe they would contribute. Because I believe that there's going to be a, a development over in that corner. Where the M Live or the barn, is that M Live Barn?
M Barn, yeah.
M Barn? Yeah. And then we have the Ice Cube, like there's all these companies that may offer some type of donation because this is going to bring more people potentially to them. People walking to, well, the library, maybe we could, you know, have the city of Ann Arbor contribute something. But I think there's possibilities. It would be a big job, but I think that, you know, even if we created a committee to solicit these companies. So that's my two cents. Trustee Brandt, you had your hand raised again. Do you have anything new to contribute?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to point out that this board is, has been really constrained by prior boards who approved the Z Road pathway. That is a hole of money. So it, it limits, there's not enough parks mileage to do Z Road pathway. I think there's at least $2.5 million more. I know, I believe we have half a million dollars in engineering. So we are saddled as a board with decisions from prior boards. So we have to balance a budget. I don't think there's enough money in parks to finish all of these connectors. Not that they're not a good idea, but the reality is where's the money coming from? I just don't think. David, you had a comment?
Yes, did you, Matt Parks has his hand up. Would you, do you want Matt to speak before you, Evan?
Matt, would you go ahead please?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to add who, some of the, the comments and whatnot, and I, I, I hear everybody and I, I agree. You know, this is, this project's been talked about and tossed around in, in various ways over the probably last five or six years. Just a little bit of context, because we work with a lot of communities in Washtenaw County with the county on connecting communities. When this was first rolled out back in July, I think Chris and Chris Chang and I had a couple of conversations and it was more of a, a call for projects for design only. And we had kind of thought about doing a little bit of a deeper dive on preliminary design. And I think the original ask was 25,000. The county then got an immense amount of response. Many communities in which I work with put in. And so I think the county's initial ask did not include any kind of specific match. But in order to get the county to allocate this money to different projects. I think they went back to communities and said, well, we can stretch our money further and do this many more projects if we got a match. So I think there was some strategy there on the county's behalf. And I think that's where things evolved a little bit. The difference between the original ask that Chris came to the board for and this is we originally wanted to put some meat on the bones of the estimate. It involves a signal crossing to Oak Valley. But the difference is, is the $50,000 gets you, I would, what I would call shovel ready plans. I also know that you guys are unable to seek more connecting communities monies for construction until Z five is built, because you've already accepted connecting communities money for the Z Road pathway. Much to trustee Brandt's comments. Z five and the whole Z Road pathway is, you know, been a big endeavor. But the good news is, is A, they are, the county's reaching out for you for connecting communities money and the design magnitude. And then my thought would be have this thing. If you were successful at getting the grant, you could have this project ready to go. But I wouldn't, I probably personally, unless you're able to successfully secure funds in ways like Supervisor Carrie said, through different donors or whatever. I would probably recommend that once Z five is built, which will happen sometime in end of 26, early 2027. You would then apply again for connecting communities monies to build this with a construction grant. Because this is like the prototypical project of what the county looks for. It's, it's not usually to be applied towards any kind of border to border, but anything that gets people in a high dense area connected to other pathways that lead to the border to border is exactly what they're looking for. This, this would be, this is a, a, a perfect example of what they're looking for. So I would think in 2027, you know, should you find the funds, you would have a plan, you'd have an engineer's estimate that's finite. I think anything that we've done in the past has been super conceptual. That doing the design would, would give the township a better idea to help populate the CIP with actual projects. And, and just the one comment back to trustee Brandt. Yeah, you're right. This, our comment in our memo says the board wishes to. But I mean, for six years, we've had various requests, whether it was through the PPP, different elected officials. And it lives and sits in the CIP. Granted, there's $0, but it's been a priority at different levels and been asked for by OHM to put together estimates and to put together grant requests in other circumstances many times. So yeah, it was a little bit of a general statement to say the township wishes, but it has been my understanding that there's been a lot of people that's wanted this gap filled for a very long time. So I'm here, if you have any questions specific for me, but I, I think that this is kind of a no brainer. It's, it's low hanging fruit. It's 25,000, yes, but. And whether it's PPP money or, or like clerk Flintoff said, comes from a different general fund, that's, that's up to you all. But I think going after a grant where you can get 50% of your design paid for is, is, is a good idea. And this will help you refine your CIP. I think it can still be a low priority project for 2026. Because chances are you're probably not building this to 2027 or 2028 anyway.
Thank you. Trustee.
Matt.
Thanks, Matt. This, this particular board request is simply for the engineering study. And it gives us something, as Matt just said, I was, he took the words right out of my mouth. It gives us something to put into the capital plan, to put into the general fund if, if, if that works out. But at least we now would then have something concrete to estimate on, number one. And number two, I think anytime you apply for a grant, you typically have to have an engineering study to, to back up what you're asking for. And this will give us that and it gives us the ability to go to, to ask for a grant. We may not be able to get a county, but I think there's a, an organization out of New York that likes to fund parks and pathways. It's Robert, the guy who owns the Buffalo Bills or who passed away now, but I'm sorry?
Wilson or?
Yeah, Robert Wilson, yeah. The Robert Wilson Fund.
Agula family owns the Buffalo Bills.
Well, he used to, maybe he sold.
Agula is.
And so, and so we might be able to get money from them. So, but we obviously need an engineering plan in order to do that. So I, I would, I would be in support of this.
Pressure.
A couple of things. One thing I can share, I don't have the delinquent personal property reconciliation up on my computer, but I am, at least as of right now, I have $219,000 in change. That's interest and due to general fund that's sitting in the tax account. Just something to keep in mind, like for things like this, when they come up that they're unexpected currents. Things to the nice interest earnings and everything else. Do I always say we need to go after it to fund things that we just happen to find? No, just, there, there's other sources of. I'm not saying that, I, I, I still see the point how it's a bit frustrating to people, how this came as, well, the county's going to pay for everything. Now they're only going to pay for half. That's kind of silly and we're frustrated. Okay, so be it. But is that something we can control? I do think that one of the conversations I had recently with Wave and AAA TA was the SEMCOG money that recently became available in a very rapid timeframe was because SEMCOG just completed their 2021 audit. In 2025, apparently COVID is still an excuse for doing your audit four years late. Anyways. That, that's my way of saying. that, that's my way of saying, there might be other money that somebody uncovers somewhere. It's not a promise, it's not a guarantee. It's just saying that I think this makes sense. I don't love that the county came back and asked us after the fact, but they also are dealing with the situation as best as has been handed to them. Thanks.
Trustee Noel, did you have anything new to?
No.
Okay. So if we could.
Um, I, I just want to say, as, as Ryan's mentioned, he's going to be bringing a proposal at our next meeting for similar work for in a different part of the township.
Mm-hmm.
And that one, I think you're going to be proposing 101.
Correct.
So I just want to say that it's rather arbitrary
Mm-hmm.
where we are using 208 funding versus 101 funding. When we've got the same engineering, you know, about the same amount of money for sidewalk crossings. So I just want to flag that um, lack of discipline with the limited 208. I know we spent some 208 funding on sidewalks in Upland when Anna was the director and, and it's just not sustainable. That's what I want to say.
Jessica, what area were you, you referring to that?
It was higher in our capital plan. It was um, the road at Jackson and Wagner. So that that's, that's Ann Arbor and Wagner.
The Jared Levine one.
Correct.
Well, and that was in our capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Okay, so um, if there's nothing more, we have a model motion here to amend FYE 26 budget to increase expenditures by 25,000 from GL 208 751 821 for engineering and design fees for this I O church road pathway project with the expectation that the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission will match these funds via the Connecting Communities Grant initiative at a sum no less than 25,000.
I would move the model motion.
I'll support. Um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Harry?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Brandt?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yeah.
Motion adopted, five to two.
Thank you. N3, possible action, full-time regular staff for Parks Department and um, Parks Director Murphy Harrington. Still?
I'm with you, Sayu.
Get used to my face. Um, currently, the Parks Department is operated with four seasonal staff. And while they've done a really phenomenal job this summer and spring and fall, relying on seasonal staff severely limits our ability to reach our goals, our goals which are outlined in our ordinance to develop, maintain and manage our parks, preserves and pathways. Employing regular staff ensures consistency and steady progress towards these goals. The creation of these positions also signals to the community our commitment to land preservation and sustainability and strengthen the department's ability to uh, sorry. The department's capacity to meet and exceed the expectations of the community. As you'll see or have already seen in the long-term plan that I provided, there is certainly no shortage of work to be done. And all of this work has a direct and immediate benefit to the residents, to our local ecosystems and to this entire region. This plan outlines four pillars. However, the scope of work for these two positions extends beyond these areas. However, I chose to focus on these four areas as they require the most planning, assessment and time commitment. As you likely noticed, the area that requires the largest devotion of time is the natural areas management. And as I stated in the July 15th meeting, passive management of our parks and preserves is just not sufficient. We need to be actively managing each of these spaces. Um, each space, um, also outlined in the long-term plan requires anywhere from low effort restoration to medium effort to high effort restoration. And by accepting the responsibility of these spaces, spaces, we are required to be good stewards and to work towards the epological success and long-term health of these parks and preserves. The other three pillars support the natural areas management and support our residents by allowing them to engage with the community and increase their environmental ethic. Thank you. I figured that people would have a lot of questions, so I wanted to keep my part brief and take time to, to hear everybody's questions.
Trustee Reed? Do you have anything?
I expected a bigger crowd here. But you all know me. But for those of you who do not know, I'm a member of both the Parks Committee and the Land Preservation Commission. As such, I should be an enthusiastic supporter of this item. However, I have significant concerns about this item as presented. For some time, the board has asked the Parks Department for a long-term plan for the township's preserves and parks. And tonight, we have one before us. It should not surprise anyone to see the amount of effort that will be required to develop, maintain and restore our seven preserves. These properties, many of which have been cleared for farming, um, lay dormant for many years prior to our purchase of it. This allowed them to become infested with non-native plants that crowded out the native grasses, forbs and trees and that were present pre-European settlement. Since our acquisition of these properties, they have been virtually ignored by the township. And it is time that we got serious on restoration effort on these properties. Nearly every resolution that comes before this board boasts about the township's amenities, including the parks, preserves, trails and natural beauty of Syo. Tonight, we have the opportunity to show that we mean what we say. But do we? We have been presented with a comprehensive multi-year plan that documents nearly 50 person years of effort. And yet we are being asked to cut the staff by 50%. This is wrong-headed. As a member of the LPC, I'm aware of several applications from residents who want to preserve their properties, some of which might become beautiful preserves, but only after significant effort to restore them and make them accessible to the public. If we approve this agenda tonight as is, we will be hobbling the Parks Department, resulting in a reduction of the amount of work that can be completed in the next year or longer. I have personal experience about working in the winter and I can attest to the fact that it is so much easier to clear invasive brush and shrubs um, in the winter than it is in the summer. First of all, you don't suffer from heat stroke. Um, and it's so much easier to move through the, through the forest and clear the undergrowth. Two full-time staff members will not even begin to cover the work required for even one preserve, let alone the seven we currently have. There are nine more tranches remaining in the current land preservation village, which amounts to approximately $9 million. With that sum, the LPC can make a lot of work for the Parks Department. And it is incumbent upon us to make the Parks Department ready for that work. Approving this agenda item as is sends a message to our Parks Department and our residents. The residents, excuse me, the message to our residents is that the board has a blind eye with respect to the improvement of our park system and our residents' enjoyment of it, and that our boasting about our beautiful township is just so much bluster. Message for our park staff is to update their resumes and start looking for another job because Syo Township does not give their work credence. There is a limitation on the administrative cost for Parks Department to be no more than 15% of the village proceeds. It is odd, insulting even, that this is the only dedicated village that I'm aware of, including transportation, conservation and fire with that specific restriction. However, Section 22-6B of the Township Parks and Pathways Ordinance lists tasks that are not considered administrative expenses. Section 22-6B 6 has the following provision. Design, engineering, construction and maintenance costs directly related to plumbing, excuse me, planning and construction of nature preserves, parks, trails, recreational opportunities and including a network of non-motorized pathways. The above describes precisely what our natural areas technicians are tasked to do and are not considered administrative costs. I believe that we should maintain the current staffing level of four natural area technicians and make the NAT position full-time. To do otherwise leaves us with a skeleton park staff able to do only a small fraction of the work required and demonstrates this board's lack of understanding of the needs of a fully operational Parks Department and a lack of trust in our Parks Director. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Clerk Flintoff?
Sure.
Thank you, David. Um, I just want to say a couple of things. Um, I, I hear you, David. Um, I, I, I don't know why, because I haven't been directly involved, but I feel like this item, the Assistant Parks Director item, this item was going to be on the agenda, not. Um, it all got very personalized and I just heard that in your comments too about like having confidence in our staff or not. I will just say that's not true for me, um, for Murphy or for my commitment to parks. Um, I will say we're in the budget process and normally we do, um, what we're trying to do is deal with positions in kind of every budget process. So I will just say one thing, I do, you know, recall the, the four temporary positions that were proposed, the board all supported. I don't think there was anybody who didn't. Um, there have been, my concern is really around process. Um, we've heard, um, I appreciate things can change and you're developing the program, Murphy, and kind of figuring out what you need as you go, and I get it, and that plans can change. Um, I do want a better understanding though of kind of operationally about how these, you know, the management plans that are going to be done, any potential, how, how those fit with the work of the Nats and how um, any other potential staff requests, because what, what I don't want to do is um, have the board in a position where, you know, one meeting it's an Assistant Parks Director, one meeting it's two Nats. Like, I, I look forward to kind of the, the budget process or whatever time it is where we kind of have like, you know, hey, here's the request for parks as a whole, you know, at least for the next 12 months. Um, and, and so maybe we're there now, but I'm just kind of wondering a question for you with the proposal that's before us. Um, what are your anticipated position requests, if you know, for next fiscal year?
Well, I guess it depends on the outcome of this current um, motion in front of everybody. Um, of course, my perfect scenario would be to have four regular full-time ARC staff for the field. If this were to pass as is tonight, then my, I'm anticipating also including two seasonal staff. So for the next 12 months, it would be two full-time regular staff and two seasonal staff that would work um, March through November.
And then what about some of the other? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What about some of the other positions? I know at some, some point, I think back in June or July, there's a possibility of kind of a, uh, you know, somebody to help with more of the, the management and assistant director of some sort.
Yes, so that whole situation transpired in a very strange way. Um, we don't really need to get into the details here, I think, but um, it was spurred by a shift in my department, um, kind of moving someone that was part-time um, out of the department permanently in a way, um, and kind of just put in motion the need for more administrative assistance. However, because there's been so much support in the field, it became really clear that really where we need effort isn't so much admin because now I can focus solely on admin and project management, whereas the field staff are the ones going out and performing all of this work, the maintenance, the management, and um, then I can be fully in charge of the development aspect of the ordinance.
And so if I'm understanding, uh, uh, because, because right now we've got one full-time Parks Director, we've got half-time project manager still assigned to Parks. I know working more on the pathways, or at least in the budget. I don't know about assignments.
As far as I understand, that should have been a budget amendment um, months ago. Because I was told he was not part of the Parks Department.
Not today.
So no, we, we haven't done a budget amendment for that. Certainly, that's something the board can do um, based on whatever kind of allocation of his time. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm open to.
I was told unequivocally earlier this year that Chris Chang was not part of the Parks Department. And I was also told at no point was he ever part of the Parks Department.
Okay, I can, I can just tell you he is, you know, and he knows. I mean, this is, these are two different things, I think. I think we're talking about the, how he's funded is 50% from Parks. So that's, that's just always been the case. I mean, I mean, that is true. I'm not, I'm not getting in an argument. I'm just saying that is part of what's true. So this board should consider that if we want to change that.
Okay, Treasury Yable?
Um, thank you. Uh, I appreciate you bringing this item forward. I, I really appreciate the, I think it was 18 pages long, the, the Goals and Projects Document. Um, I took the time to read that over the weekend. It was quite a, a lengthy read, but you know, one of the areas I saw that you had inside of it, it's like each 13 is to your best estimate as far as in lieu of the Natural Area Management Plan, that there's 95,000 hours of work just for initial restoration, which when I divided that by 2,080 hours, you know, 52 week year, 40 hours a week is 45 years, so that's a lot of time, probably more than we'll ever actually be able to staff, but um, of just one person, but um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I know you've done programming. I appreciate, you know, uh, education at the last meeting. Um, I'm trying to see, you know, from the education piece, I guess the research project piece, where, where do you see, you know, I, I, I see the, the education side of it being a benefit to, to the township, but what, what's the goal of having the staff do that research piece? Like, how does that tie back into um, you know, the greater township and like, how, how do we, you know, the average person walks it off the street, like if they asked about that, what would you tell them?
Okay, I love this question. Um, so the reason that those research projects, and I also have my own research project that I work on, which is um, acoustic bat monitoring. All of that data goes to directly influence the way we manage each park and preserve individually. And um, for example, uh, we found two endangered species and two threatened species as a result of those efforts. And because of that, um, I can use Five Oaks as an example, how we manage that preserve is now infinitely changed because we found that information out. So for example, um, with those salamander populations, we are able to use glyphosate in those areas. So it changes the way that we manage because we use glyphosate to treat all of our woody invasives. But because that can have a direct negative impact on their breeding success, we now know we should definitely not do that there. And another example is we have a prescribed fire coming up in the fall. And because I was able to share that information with the team that's going to be performing that burn, they are now changing the way they're approaching the burn as to minimize the potential of mortality for that threatened species. So all of this information really impacts the way that we not only remove invasive species, but also, for example, the, the moth survey out at Dan Curler, because we saw so few silk moths in an area where we really should have seen quite a few more,
Mm-hmm.
that tells us, that signals to us that we need to be incorporating and planting a specific type of woody species, shrub or tree that is currently absent, or at least is not incurring in a number where it should be. So then we can pinpoint these areas that will also be supported by the management plans and the plastic quality assessments in combination kind of with this um, categorization of high, medium and low effort. And altogether, those things create, it's, it's actually amazing because all of those And altogether, those things create, it's, it's actually amazing, because all of those things create our priorities for us. So we're not necessarily having to go through and say, okay, well, here's Van Kurler, let's, let's cut it up into four management units and we'll kind of assess as we go. By having all of these factors at once, these priority units reveal themselves to us. And all of that information too is important for ongoing, um, just understanding of our ecosystems and all of this information, because we're doing these projects in a, in a, um, methodical way that we're, is able to be repeatable. We put this information on our website so that universities or other organizations in Michigan or in the township can access that information and use it to further their own studies.
Okay, that, that's, thank you very much. Uh, I, I think that, that, uh, gives me the full circle on, on sort of why we were doing it, cuz, you know, I got the information from that, from those presentations that I'm like, I'm going back to, you know, where, where does that connect to what, why does it matter, right?
And part of what I would love to see with more, with more help, we can target more, like I said, in, in the plan, going out to college fairs and going out to public events, like, um, in the summer they have, what is it called?
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market, thank you. And be able to go into those communities and attract volunteers, so that especially wildlife initiatives are very time-consuming. But these are also things that very introductory-level volunteers could do on our behalf, especially nest box monitoring, frog call training, those are all things that with a, a stronger volunteer base, we can take that off of the staff and allow them to dedicate time in other areas.
I, I guess I did have some questions, sort of to go on a little bit different vein around process, you know? Obviously, I, excuse me, you have staff that are coming to the end of their, uh, seasonal term. It's my understanding that this position would still have to be posted and that we would still have to re-interview for the few slots. Is that your understanding?
No. Actually, yes, partially no. My understanding is that we are required to post it. Uh, we are not required to interview for it if I would like to hire, um, basically in-house.
Could I bring up our HR manager to, to confirm her understanding of our process on that? I, 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 that's one of the questions I wanted to ask, cuz I thought there might be a disconnect there.
Sure.
Hello?
So the question was, um.
You know, for example, if two of the incumbent, uh, four staff members that are currently in the Nats position, let's say all four apply, just easy, and they, and two of them could be picked and start basically, you know, as soon as their temporary position ends, I think is what Director Harrington's understanding is. Is that correct?
No, we, we had discussed is the posting of the job would be for a short duration, but that it would be January 1 would be in effect, the effective date.
Okay.
So we have talked about that.
Yeah, that's my assumption as well.
Okay.
So it would come to the board as a normal position.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of this, but I have some of the process concerns, so I, I'm still on the fence a little bit, you know? I see, I see the need from trustee Reed's comment, I see the need from, you know, the documentation, but I'm also seeing, you know, some of the process pieces, you know, as far as we're just starting the budget, we're just, we're about to go over the authorized position list document next week. And, you know, I, I, I'm just trying to balance the two differing things and see where we're sitting at, but, I'll yield, yield at this point, cuz I'm sure there's other questions. Thank you both.
Trustee, Brant.
Um, yeah, I wanna ask anybody on this board, do you know the history of the millage? Was this just enacted in 2020?
August of 2020.
Okay, so that's not a very long timeframe. This, the township has parted, supported parks. This is a new program. It takes time for evolution. I, I don't think it's fair to say the township did not support this. The voters supported it, the board supported it. So there is that support, and I will bring up the millage language, because this is what our voters voted on. And it talks, I, I left you folks, uh, the language at your seats. It does talk about the administrative costs shall not exceed 15%. That's in there for a reason, and that's what people voted for. At the current rate, if you, when you add these additional positions, rough estimate, you're at 30% administrative costs. So let's just think about what the voters asked for. If it needs to be changed, I don't know how you go through a change for something that's been voted. Anyway, seems a little bait and switchy, um, but I'll get off that horse. In September 2021, Anna Cohn did a 91-page report called the Syle Township Natural Features Report and Management Plan. And this was specific to West Syle Preserve and, and Liberty Pond. And this is a very detailed report about the analysis of the locations, the geology, the hydrology, pre-settlement vegetation, current features. They also did surveys and they mapped out in these two preserves locations that they did their surveys. They're very detailed. And there's a recommendation in here to continue that process to see the evolution of it. Because this is very, the, the, the maps clearly state, and it has future management, uh, direction. So they did a birdings, breeding bird survey, they did a vegetation survey. So they did the same things that you're talking about is, is based on the surveys, what things would we do to, um, maintain, restore these preserves? Murphy, are you familiar with this report?
Oh, yeah. I read it before. I even interviewed for the position. It's very good.
So what, what about the plots that were carved out? And it's had a timeframe for when those surveys should be done again. Has it, did that happen?
It's a different type of surveying method, and again, Anna and I have very different approaches to natural areas management. And so while there is value in the way that she assessed the site, it is not necessarily the only right way to interpret the natural features of the area. So that's step one. There are a couple of things, especially from Liberty Pond, that we did focus in on. Um, you'll note that it was recommended that the loop around Liberty Pond be closed so that it's not a complete loop as to preserve the, the shoreline. That's something that we have done. We've done tons of work out at Liberty Pond, specifically addressing some of the concerns that were brought up in her plan. Luckily, there's just, a lot of the things that have to go on at Liberty Pond are very obvious to anybody with a natural areas background. Whereas at Liberty Pond, things become a little bit, not Liberty Pond, West Syle Preserve, things become a lot more challenging because of it being a forested wetland essentially. So it kind of limits our ability to target some of those areas, but last winter, when it was just me, um, I was going out there and working in some of those areas that she had ID'd, and we had the staff out around the Vernal Pool addressing some of the areas that she identified as well. And we actually managed to clear a huge space of invasive species from where she identified it, so.
Yeah, I'm all in on invasive species. I've studied before. I just did honeysuckle on Craig Road with my little, uh, Milwaukee. Anna put some information in here about things in West Syle. I, I believe she made some recommendations about not putting some pathways in because of the topography. So that's the kind of stuff I'm asking about, um, you know, we carry forward that, that work and we incorporate it into the work that we're doing now.
Certainly, yeah. We carry it forward, um, tweak it a little bit. Uh, there was definitely, um, the committee and I this past year, specifically, um, Steve and Vida, we had talked about trying to make the connection to that new development that moved because of.
Would be.
Would be your comments.
Working to connect the pathway that was installed at Woodview Commons through West Syle. Um, you know, it's just another thing that it's, it's very wet and it takes a lot of time to figure it out. So we're working on it, working through those things, but just because Anna prioritized it doesn't necessarily mean that, that I'm prioritizing it.
Yeah, that we also have in West Syle, the, um, uh, we don't broadcast this, the, the, um, heron rookery, and she had some, um, uh, recommendations on trying to isolate that. That's why we don't tell anybody where it is. We don't want people stopping around there. So just wanted to ask about those, especially with a giant development that went in, in monitoring the rookery for changes in, um, abandoned nests or whatever, whatever Anna had suggested.
We have been doing, um, early season monitoring to, to gauge the numbers of herons that are returning, but we don't wanna disturb them. And so what's been done is we've been using a camera trap to get a preliminary estimate at how many birds are returning, then retrieving it, and then not going back, just to ensure that we don't disturb them, cuz they are particularly sensitive species.
Just, you know.
Yeah, I just have a few comments. I, I'm going to support this, but I do have questions. You're proposing two staff, and I will support two, but did you consider starting with one?
I, I did consider it, um, only briefly though, because, uh, for the purpose of safety especially, I mean, any field work, uh, we really, we really require two people to go out.
And I can understand that. I briefly discussed this with Christie, and she mentioned that issue too. And I can understand that. Um, and you would post the positions, as I heard you say earlier. Okay, I think that as a board, we need to support parks. And I, so I'm willing to support this. Thank you.
Trustee, Riser.
I will be supporting this as well. I appreciate trustee Reed's comments about two might not be enough to do what needs to be done, but I'm willing to start, uh, with two. With respect to the administrative costs and the 15%, I don't regard natural areas technicians at all to be admin costs. I think admin costs is the cost allocation plan or what we charge them for rent or things like that. The I, admin costs are the shakedown that we sometimes levy on our, on our, um, millage recipients. But I don't regard natural areas technicians at all to be admin. I think that's part and parcel of what, of what, uh, parks is about. It does say for the funding, the capacity to develop and maintain natural preserves, how do you do that? You do that with people. Um, how do you maintain a park? People. Trails, people. Recreational opportunities, Murphy's programs that she has and, and the things that we do in the parks. So, so I, I, I think this is right at the wheelhouse, right in the wheelhouse of what the parks and pathways millage is for. I'm gonna be supporting two. Uh, I don't, I wouldn't support more at this juncture, David, um, but I would support two and certainly do so. But if, if it proves that we need more in the future, then we can revisit that. But at this stage, I'm willing to support it, and I would even move the model, uh, motion at the appropriate time unless there's more discussion.
Are you finished, her?
I am, thank you.
Yeah, I am in support of this, and I do see a need for four, however, um, there's some two, I can see two permanent and two seasonal, and there was something that was brought up earlier in a meeting, um, that, attorney Fink had said, and I don't remember the, um.
The, the time limited, like appointments or positions?
Yeah, um, so, something to that. And Christie, you were gonna look into that. At least that's what I remember earlier. But, um, anyways, that would cover the two seasonal, but the two permanent. Yeah, we have, um, the voters and they, they, they want this. We have a lot of, it's a, it's very popular in the township. I wish roads were, but, you know, anyways, and hopefully. Yes, and I agree with trustee Riser that the administrative costs, that's, doesn't have to do with employees, because if that's the case, then we have a purpose of funding the capacity to develop and maintain. So that means we could not have employees and we'd have to contract for everything. But administrate, administrative to me is the, the cost allocation part of it. Um, now, the budget process, um, I do agree, so we have this gap. And if we didn't do anything until the budget ends or the, um, uh, you know, March 31st is our budget, the end of our fiscal year and then April 1st. So to wait those couple of months, that's the whole winter where there, there's a lot of things that could be done. So, um, but I also do understand that we have a process. However, I don't wanna see a gap and then you alone running parks and doing what you need to do all winter long. So I am in support of the two permanent. And there was some, oh, and it's concerning about this project manager and 50% of his, uh, salary, project manager, manager's salary is coming from parks when he's not working on parks. So that could, should be a cost allocation that if he's working on a project for parks, that should be cost allocated, but 50% of his salary should not be, um, unless he is totally doing 50%. But in, if this has not been, um, if, if the project manager has not been doing 50% parks for a while, that needs to be, um, paid back, in my opinion. Okay.
Just a, a couple items we haven't hit on. First of all, the, again, the, the full authorized position request for all of our funds is going to be submitted on December 11th. So I just want people to realize it's four weeks away before we get kind of the fully loaded proposal from parks, from general fund, from all of this. I'm a little troubled, um, that any of us don't know what's in the budget, so, but I'll do better about that. We are the ones who set the budget and make budget amendments, so that they haven't been made shouldn't be a surprise to us who has, have not made them. We certainly can, um, would welcome, you know, Murphy, Christie, whoever's recommendation on that. Um, but yeah, we budgeted, um, for four temporary Nats for a half-time project manager and for one parks director. So I, I guess a question on this. So this model motion would do several things. It would create a job description for a natural areas technician. It is, I guess, classified as kind of a regular permanent, a regular full-time position. Is that correct, Aurora? Complying with all the benefits and everything in our handbook. So I just wanna be clear, it's not time limited. It's a, it's a regular position, so it's just to be clear. In the temporary Nats, the schedule and, and something that I would wanna eliminate is there was, uh, kind of budgeted, um, overtime. And so I'm wondering with these permanent positions, you know, I, I just, and it's across the organization, it's not just about parks. But, you know, I, I see sometimes people starting to salivate over kind of budgeted overtime and, you know, I've seen maneuverings before in our utilities department, certainly with fire, but to contain costs, I just don't see any reason. But to contain costs, I just don't see any reason aside from an emergency or something extraordinary why there would be overtime. I would imagine if their schedule needed to be, maybe there's a schedule that has to be posted, you know, Sunday through Friday or whatever it is, or Saturdays. But I would like to have the flexibility if we're going to invest in permanent positions with benefits that we not budget in overtime. As I know was done for the temporary positions, but I just think it's fiscally irresponsible to do that when we can set people's schedules. What are each of your thoughts on that?
At least for my part, I guess if that were to be eliminated, the overtime, I think it, it acts as, what's the word? Not incentive, but I think it's a fair way to compensate staff members who are, when I budgeted for this, it was because of volunteer workdays that they'd be staffing on early Saturday mornings. I think it's a really good way to encourage people who are taking time out of their personal lives to put these programs on outside of their regular Monday through Friday. We are less than 50%, we're at less than 50% usage for that overtime. So I certainly feel like I did over budget for it. But I do think keeping some amount there to, to thank people who do take their personal time and are willing to alter their schedules is a positive thing. And I'd also, if, if that is something that is going to be on the table, altering a schedule. So let's say we have an evening program, so they're coming in from noon to eight. I would just like to make sure that I, as the department head, have the authority to make those changes. Because as of right now, I don't necessarily have that authority.
I, and I would just say for positions generally, it already says weekend work required. I, I would be opposed in, in any position across the organization to, to budget overtime. I mean, the, the only overtime we budget is by contract with our firefighters. Utilities, there's emergencies we understand may happen. I, I really don't want to create this precedent. I don't want to become one of the governmental units that has, you know, the budgeted overtime. It's just, it is, you know, kind of famously wasteful. The, the second thing I want to say is if the effective date is January 1st, I, I just want to be clear about this model motion. It would be to amend the authorized positions list to eliminate two temporary Nats. So it would be retaining two for the remainder of this fiscal year, which is kind of a non-issue because we'll be looking at it for April 1 forward. And then creating two regular full-time ones, is that effective January 1st? So if it's effective January 1st, I'm, I guess I'm just wondering why, why the board can't look at the whole position request from the Parks Department on December 11. I don't see what slows, slows us down here if the goal is to post and hire people by January 1st.
Treasurer, people.
Excuse me. The next question I came up with is we don't have a stepping grade for this position. Well, I guess we do, it's just not on the job description. Never mind.
Well, there, there isn't officially one, yeah, correct. So we would still have to.
Is that, is that something we're probably going to review with authorized positions on December 11th? We would think, yes. Yeah, see that's, and, and I'm not trying to be difficult, it just goes back to like, we're very close to doing the next steps of what we should be doing for everything. And it's just these other things that come together, that all the admin pieces are making me ask more questions. That doesn't mean that they're good, bad, or anything. They just are questions that need to be answered in order to make the process, not just for Parks Department, but for the entire organization work seamlessly, or at least better. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Brandt?
Yeah. If, if trustees are going to put this forward, I strongly encourage you to read the ordinance. It defines what administrative costs are. Administrative costs include salary. If you want to push, push to bring this forth, then I ask that you change the ordinance so we're in compliance, because that's what the ordinance says.
Do you have a fair?
Yeah.
I'm okay. It's okay. Trustee Reiser, did you?
No, the only thing I was going to do was to move to authorize the job descriptions for natural areas technicians to amend the F E, fiscal year ending 25, 26 budget to amend the authorized positions list to eliminate two temporary natural areas technicians and add two regular full-time natural areas technician positions for the Parks Department.
Okay, well, hold that thought, please. Trustee Reed.
I just want to go back to the overtime issue. I think what our parks director is getting at is that the NATs will be leading volunteer workdays at certain times during the year, clearing trails, doing invasive work. And this, these will be on Saturday mornings, typically from nine to noon. And so that's, that's their week, that's their day off. Now, are you, are you going to give the parks director the authority to say, okay, you can, you can come in late on Monday morning, three hours late because you worked three hours on Saturday? Or go home three hours early on Friday because you're going to work three, I mean, I mean, we have to compensate these, these folks for coming in on, on the weekend and leading these workdays. So how, if we eliminate overtime, how do we do that?
Well, I would just suggest that that be their schedule. I mean, if there's, I mean, this, this is, this is, because I think it creates a compounding problem across the organization. I mean, I would leave it to Aurora, but we can set schedules. If we're going to post, we set schedules. And I mean, I certainly make people work on godly hours as part of their commitment. So Aurora?
We could set a schedule within the week that covers the 40 hours without having overtime. Also, when you have hourly employees, you do not want them to, well, because you're coming in on Saturday, why don't you come in later on Friday? Because you should be paying them for their time worked. And since they're hourly, you shouldn't have them leave earlier or come in later because they're working another day. So the best thing to do is to set a schedule within 40 hours if you're trying to avoid the overtime. That's what you want to do, not try to take money from them by saying, well, because you're coming in on Saturday, why don't you come in later on Monday? If that makes sense.
Doesn't make sense to me because if you're going to work 40 hours during the week, how do you work an extra three hours on Saturday and still get paid for 40? I don't, I don't understand that.
I mean, they're scheduled as Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
But I'm saying we don't have to make that assumption.
Well, it would be Monday afternoon through Saturday afternoon, is that what you're?
Their schedule could be Tuesday through Saturday, for example.
Well. Yeah. So I, I'm raising my hand so I can say something.
Three hours on Saturday, nine to noon, not a whole day. So it can't be Tuesday to Saturday.
So I think that's a discussion for another time, how we are, if there is an amount in overtime, I know Murphy indicated that they didn't use all of the overtime. So I think that is obviously going to be a, needs to be a discussion to figure out how that's going to come about.
Okay.
And it is limited, $3,000 a year.
But that is a ripple effect across the organization, David. It will be, I mean, it's.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the precedent across the organization, really. The entitlement.
Trustee Reed, are you finished? It seems like you have something else, but. Okay, all right. Well, yeah, and so this, I know we have our employee handbook and whatnot, but it seems that the parks director, if this is going to be 40 hours a week and there's these volunteer or not volunteer, but events on Saturday, that it should be at the discretion of the parks director because she is overseeing the department. And if they, I don't flex time, I hear that quite often, but I know that's for salary. However, it can be worked out, but it, you know, this whole, a hard and fast rule doesn't apply across every department because every department is different and we need, really should look at that. The other thing is, is that December 11th, we, regarding the authorized positions and then January 1st to hire, but then we have this gap. I believe our temporary Nats will be, they're only through November sometime, but then we have December and January. So, and there's, I'm assuming there's still work to be done. And I would be in support of this for the January 1st. However, I would also like to see where our temporary could stay on until the end of December.
I think that, could I just suggest something?
Sure.
I, I'm, I would just say that, that would be a, a, a different model motion, Gillian. That would be a model motion to extend the temporary staff people. That's different than creating, you know, permanent positions. Because I mean, I mean, yeah, so I'm just saying, if you wanted to put that forward, that's what the motion would be. I, I would just say on the hiring, I would say we have come so far from just hiring the people we happen to know and be related to. And so I think we should be very proud of ourselves and, and I just want to reiterate that we have a very standard process for when we have a permanent position. We have a hiring process and the board hires, even if it's just on consent, you know, after a short process. So I wouldn't want to move, move backwards on that.
Anything else, trustee, or I'm sorry, treasurer, people?
Mr. Reiser made the model motion. Is there a second?
I would like to make a friendly amendment. In addition to the language, it's already been presented. The trustee Reiser will bring proposed ordinance language that addresses the ordinance language that talks about salary related to administrative costs. Because you are, you are quite adamant that that's not what it means.
Well, I'm also looking at 22-6 administrative costs. Charges for the following items can be paid for the mileage revenues. Design, engineering, construction and maintenance costs directly related to planning and construction of nature preserves, parks, trails, recreational opportunities, including a network of non-voterized pathways. So to the extent that section B, parent six, regarding the maintenance cost needs clarification, I would work with our township attorneys to, to bring something that gives greater clarity.
Trustee Reiser, would that be a separate motion or trustee Brandt, one of them? That trustee Reiser would work with our township attorney to bring
proposed changes to, John, what is the ordinance again, 22?
Section 22-6.
Yep.
Administrative costs.
Yes.
Well, I, I hear V6, the maintenance costs.
There, there's a couple of sections. Okay, got it.
I think it's section A that calls out the salary as administrative.
I, I would like to offer a friendly amendment that this board, any, John or Kathy, if you'd be so kind to put some effective dates for these authorizations, particularly the elimination of the two positions and the creation of the two positions. Would you please propose an effective date just for clarity of implementation? So Aurora and Christie know how to proceed.
No, I'm not going to do that. I'm not committed to doing that.
Well, is it, if, in the absence of a date, this is how I would read a motion. To eliminate two temporary Nats, I would assume if I, that it would be effective tomorrow. Is that your intention?
We would have people not being paid.
Yeah, let's, let's get this clear. So it says to eliminate two Nats. Is there a proposed effective date? And then we've heard verbally that the addition of two full-time would be effective Jan 1. Or are you saying effective tomorrow? If, if one of you could, whatever your date is, I just think it's good to have clarity.
Murphy, what was your plan for when the two temporary technicians would be done with their current role? What was the?
Their official end date is November 21st, next Friday. So for the sake of evenness, I think it would make sense to say that those positions would end effective November 30th. And then for the sake of being able to post the job as soon as possible for creation of the new positions to be effective immediately. Or maybe even effective November 30th?
I mean, we have a next board meeting on the 25th. Would it really be posted for candidates before us? Maybe.
Did I make the amendment for the dates that, that the positions be eliminated effective November 22nd, which is the day after these people leave?
I think that falls in line with at least what was approved by the board for the duration on the authorized position list. We're trying to be consistent.
And, and then that the positions be created on, also created on November 22nd, or does it make sense to wait till the Monday?
Some confusion about positions being created and when the position starts. It's not to ask him when the position starts. When the position.
What, what, what is the distinction you're making, Mariah?
Well, I, I heard, heard the parks director say that the position could be created November 30th. But I think, I don't know if she means that's the day people would start. I don't know how you get some, no. So that's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. She and I don't understand what you mean by the next date. I understand that, that termination date, but are you looking for the date the new person starts?
I don't think we know the date the new person would start.
Is that what you're looking for though?
No, I'm just saying, when, when would the position be created? We, we've talked about January 1st as potential start.
Positions be created on paper, basically, so that we could authorize them and post them.
Yeah, which, which can be.
November 22nd?
Yeah, anytime. Just when we were talking about eliminating people, I wanted to make.
I, I defer to Aurora, but.
Oh, so the positions are not on our salary and wage. So they're not even on that. Those positions, since they were temporary, were not included in the salary and wage report that was completed.
So we don't have a salary.
All we have is what we have under the temporary role. So it's, it's fine if it's going to be the same salary, but we don't have that information because that job has not been created to fall into our salary grade and steps yet. So that needs to be approved first by the board.
Given this information and the amount of due diligence that needs, does need for this item, I make a motion to table until November 25th.
Support. But I'm sorry, procedurally, Gillian, we still had a, and Ryan, we still had a motion on the table supported by Noel.
Yep.
No, it's a table takes precedence. Table trumps it.
Oh, that's correct.
And, and I would just ask, I think, I think there's been a lot of good progress. But just a, a position description with a salary, the grade and a, a full plan.
How do we create the steps and the grade for a position that isn't authorized yet?
How do we create the steps and the grade for a position that isn't authorized yet?
Aurora, well, no, it's not a barrier, I don't think.
We do have the approved temporary uh role. So we have the job description out there. It's whether or not we are going to make any changes to that when we approve it as a regular. Positions, I can take the job description task and give that to uh Ronberg. So that we can place it on, he can have a proposed placement on that uh salary grade list. Which we would then bring to the board for approval, it sounds like at the next one. And then Murphy and Ian and uh Christie would have a discussion then to to see if that falls in line with. With what we believe the role should be too.
And Aurora, will you be able to get a hold of Sir Ronberg? But um and and have them respond before then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll I'll uh I'll be real persuasive. And ask if they could to, you know, put. There's an urgency to this, let's see if they can do that for us.
It just seems like we do have some loose ends here. That would be better if we clarified them and brought this back. But I wanted to make sure you guys were okay with that.
Doesn't matter if they are, that's what the law.
Yeah, I know, I know, I just want to give them a chance to say something.
Does it postpone posting the precision? It's a delay.
Well, um. So this is tabled and then we.
There will be if it votes.
Be a please voted for it.
Wait, yeah, okay. So. There needs to be a vote to table.
Yes. Those are the questions.
Right, and who um was it, who supported?
I did, motion by Yeaple, support by Flynnoff to table.
Um all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And to be clear, the motion was to table until eleven twenty-five.
Correct.
Oh, yes. All in all in favor say aye of the.
I don't know what what's going on now.
David's voting on a tape.
No, it's only noted.
He's right.
So should we do a roll call then?
No, that's okay, you got you got six guesses and one no.
Okay, okay. All right, um. Well, I'm still concerned that we have um the temporary Nats and that are. Their end date is November, what did you say, I'm sorry, November twenty-first? And I would like to make a motion to have that those positions extended to December thirty-first. Um so that there could um the the parks. Maintenance can still happen during those couple of months and then this gives us time to figure out everything else.
Support.
Call it, Goshen.
I'd ask for a roll call.
Harry?
Yes.
Yeaple?
No.
Flynnoff? No. Brand?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Can I request a five-minute recess?
Yes, please. Okay, um. Would it is, I don't believe.
Currently nine fifty-five. Presumably at ten o'clock.
Come back at ten.
Kind of all of our positions like that, we will never have a justice.
Yeah, that must be true.
Yeah. We'll see the things and free the maybe that's the day they want. So.
We would think about how much Parkland we were gonna.
Uh yeah, I'll stop it.
Ryan, I hear recently.
Yeah. Trustee Reed. Okay, well. Let's bring this meeting back into session. Uh let's move on to um N four, possible action revise the board of trustees' rules of order. And this was presented by uh trustee Brand.
You want me to explain it?
Of course, you brought the agenda item and.
Okay, so um. We discussed this topic at our September thirtieth. Board meeting, there were suggestions for changes. Including the list of discussed items, including facilitator of agenda items, equity of ability to co-comment. Changes to reflect consistent use of the term moderator to align with with statute. So. We had the discussion. I'm bringing this to uh resolve. The discussion items that were presented. And we have a suggested language. Uh to accomplish uh. Two of these items, facilitator of agenda items. And changes to reflect consistent use of the term moderator. We do not have any language that talks about equity of ability to comment. I. Have not scribed anything, although that's my goal is to have equity uh in the ability to comment. Uh so what I'm suggesting is that we take a brief discussion of this. Uh I would recommend be limited to twenty minutes. If we want to make further changes, bring those uh during one of our work sessions. I'm just the scribe of this agenda item.
What does that mean?
That means I am not the person that suggested the facilitator of agenda items. Although I've been accused of that.
Trustee, uh, sorry. Clerk Flynnoff.
Sure, I just want to um thank Kathleen, I like the idea of spending twenty minutes on it. Um, these are issues, um I think. Our um board meetings have been, you know, so many of them um so unpleasant and we all want to address that and make ourselves more effective. Um after, I think, one of the most contentious meetings, I sat down for a few hours on a Sunday. And I came up with um the redlined rules of order. So those are my suggestions as presented. Um and it was to address a couple of things. Um, the facilitator of agenda items, I did try to address a little bit of the equity. But um appreciate it's um insufficient. And then um changes to standardize language, so. Just very briefly, um on the redline version, which all mine, um as indicated, um. Changes. The changes on page five were simply an oversight, we should have caught it when we did our rules of order. Page five of the redlined rules of order, these are um proposed changes for board consideration. Um we had just left off, you know, a couple of things on our agenda items, we do them anyways, but board member response. Um throughout, I consistently use the term moderator, which is the statutory. You know, word, um I, you know, reviewed the statute and kind of the guidance on this stuff before I drafted this. Um four point, so you'll see that change in four point six and throughout. Just to standardize, sometimes we said facilitator, sometimes we said moderator, sometimes we said supervisor, sometimes we said something else and it's just moderator. Um four point eight, um. Again, that was just an oversight, a couple of things we'd left off of the order, conduct of meetings. Um, the substantive um suggestions I had was around five point two, three, four, and then five point two. So um. Five point two, five point three and five point four. Um I was thinking about kind of the efficiency and what I have found is that the person who. Has developed the item is most familiar with it. They're the ones who have gotten the most feedback about the item ahead of time. And I think can most kind of efficiently take people through. I've also noticed um source of conflict on this board. Um during different instances where. The moderator of the meeting will have the person introducing the item. Um and then is that their one turn to talk or is that not their one turn to talk? So that's been a conflict that's happened several times. We don't have anywhere in our rules that explicitly says the person who introduces the item. Provides an overview, that's generally what we've done, I think it's nice. I think it makes sense, I just think it would be more efficient to just have that person just say like, hey, here's the item. You know, whatever it is, payment of the bills, take the board through and move forward. Um so that's what I called the agenda item facilitator, so that's just for kind of. The the substantive stuff, all the powers and duties of the moderator. Um would would remain the same. Um in terms of, you know, keeping order and 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 all of that. Um and facilitating the standard items, but those where there's some substance that somebody has. Developed for the board, that person would facilitate that item. Um and that's described in five-three and five-four, um you'll see the next page, page eight, permission to speak. I just struck that out, I um. I I don't know what to say. I I looked at other models where, you know, some boards have, you know, everybody shall be treated like. With respect and nicely and that is what we want, but it felt a little silly to have to say that, I I heard David Reed in my head. You know, I can't believe we have to be called on to speak, it feels so disrespectful and. And I think he's not alone in feeling that, so we need something to have. Order and balance on in airtime. Um without people feeling um. Like they're children. So that that was this extent of my thoughts, I know Ryan also offered some thoughts.
In a different documents. Trustee Reed. Do we begin with you or should we?
I'm I'm at this time, I have nothing to say.
Okay, treasurer Yable?
Uh, thank you, uh, please ignore my documents, as those were just were documented, as that was just thoughts at the time. Uh but that is not uh. Something I wish to act upon at this point. Um, I am supportive of the redline document, I think this is another attempt to. Try to move us in a direction where we're constantly improving, I mean, I I do have to say I was. Wasn't really surprised at our last meeting where we did have an hour of presentations, otherwise it would have been ninety minutes. I'm sad we're not there tonight, thanks.
Trustee Brand?
Um, yes, I I fully support these redline changes, um. Clearly uh changing the word moderator to line up with statute is. Is preferred, um no confusion, no confusion on that, um. In regards to the agenda item facilitator, that's the person that's most knowledgeable. I believe that's the person that should drive the conversation because they have the most information about it. Which means. They might give some feedback when a comment is made, it might be a correction or additional information. Um, I I really think that's the way to go, um. The current process, I believe, is clunky. Um, to have to ask for permission, I've I've already mentioned the inequities. So I think this would resolve some of those, um. So I'm fully supportive of this.
Trustee Noel?
I am also supportive. However, I. You know, Kathleen, you talked about inequities with our current procedure. There could also be some inequities with this in terms of if there's no. No definition as to how. One speaks, it's it's kind of a more of a free-for-all or a more natural thing. The people who tend to talk more are going to be at an advantage. And that could could bring different issues, I don't know if it would happen, but it could.
Depends now.
And I just. I think we need to make some changes and we may need to try some different approaches. So I do support this, but I would like to have a little bit more discussion about it because I think it's complicated. And our behavior during meetings. Is nuanced, it's complicated, different people do different things. That are counterproductive and that has not helped our functioning as a group.
Trustee Noel, are you finished?
I'm done.
Trustee Reed, uh Riser?
Um. I don't support these. We're going from supervisor to moderator, but the township. You know, law says that the supervisor shall be the moderator, so to call it something other than the supervisor. Almost seems silly when it's statutorily. To to call it the moderator, this it's statutorily, the supervisor shall be the moderator. Um, I I. I also don't understand on page six. Uh with respect to board member response clarification, board members or their designate may follow up concerning comments. So I'm going to hear on designate that, you know, designate Rob Pattinson to do my follow-up to his comments. Um.
That that was in our original rules, John.
But like, I I don't know what, I don't even know what that means, or their designate.
I well, I would say. I would say, you know, one thing, and I don't know if it's in stature, it's just our practice. Attorney think that we have had the deputy clerk at a couple of our meetings in the past. I believe it could be similar practice for the deputy.
Yeah, I don't know if that even.
And I'm I'm sorry, but just to clarify, it it's in four point five, regular meetings age. This was in our original rules, I'm not saying we can't change it, John.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we already discussed this and I think the thinking was if there's a staff person like, oh, Matt Parks is here, he could. Respond to that, so John, that's not a change, that was just, we literally forgot to put it in three places that we intended to.
Okay, I I don't know that we need it or or but 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 um. I and I guess, I don't know that we need any of this, this seems to me to be. An indictment against Gillian's um the way that she she conducts meetings now. I I. I I do think that we need to be called about, otherwise we all speak. At the same time, or whoever speaks first kind of controls the floor or or the debate, so I really. In in Robert's rules of order, in order to to to, you have to be recognized by the chair. Uh in order to speak, so I I think that serves value, now the supervisor. Gillian's got to be fair about it, it's it's really hard on this slightly curved deis for her to see people. And I think she's doing a better job of looking down and trying to do it, so. I I I appreciate the concerns about equity or what I would call just fairness or excluding people or having favorites. Um, so. I I I don't think that. It's not a problem that a conversation with Gillian after the meeting say, hey, you keep calling on me, couldn't couldn't solve. I don't think we need to incorporate it into our rule, I really don't like. The 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 agenda item facilitator, I I get that if you do something, you get to speak first on it, but. To turn it over to you really takes some of the statutory duties uh from the supervisor in his or her role to 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 run the meeting. She ran for election, she got the supervisor gig, she gets to run our meetings and that's that. This whole thing about five dot four, the agenda item facilitator shall facilitate the presentation, which I can. See that, the discussion, that would be if Ryan introduces something, Ryan decides who talks next, then Ryan has to recognize. Then Ryan has to recognize the speakers and the deliberation. So, so I, I, I don't think that, that it's a good idea to take away the statutory duties from, from that. And, and you said something about, and then five dot three, other persons at the meeting shall not speak unless recognized by a member. So, so like which member can I say, Kathy, go ahead. I, I, I think it really has to be recognized by, by the supervisor who.
I think that I intended that to be members of the public outside the board.
Where is that five dot three? I don't see that. Page eight. Oh, but limitation on speaker. Have spoken on a particular matter. Boy, oh, boy, wouldn't it be interesting if we all followed this for once? On a theoretical, on a hypothetical basis of just what would happen? Other persons at the meeting shall not speak unless recognized by a member. Does that mean I can call on someone sitting in the audience to speak? I don't know.
And, and John, again, this is, you know, something I drafted for board discussion. So it's, it's fine to tear it up. I'm just telling you what I intended was that that didn't apply to board members.
I mean, like, the takeaway for me is like Jillian, you gotta be, you gotta be looking to see if somebody wants to speak. Everybody, we don't get to speak up until Jillian recognizes us, but she's got to do as good a job as she can seeking us out if we want to speak. And I, and I think, I really think she's gotten better at that. I'm not trying to be critical of her, by the way, but, but, I, I, I think, I don't think we need these changes. We just need an agreement, a commitment from all of us to not interrupt each other, not speak again until someone's spoken, to try to let the supervisor who's miring the meeting call on us. And Jillian can't punish me because she's mad at me and not call on me. So I mean, I, I don't know that, do we really need this? I yield. I'm going to vote against them.
Trustee Reed.
Following up on John's comment, five, one. And by the way, there's two, five, three. So let's, we should clear that up. But five, one says, the supervisor, if present, shall be the moderator. Well, the moderator in this particular case has a small M. So I would probably suggest that that be changed to a capital M. But it starts right out saying the supervisor is the moderator. So, but five, three, unpaid, the five, three, that's on page seven. I have a question about the last sentence, which is a compound sentence, and maybe that's why I'm confused. If the board member who prepared the item is not present or if the item was prepared by a staff person, the item facilitator shall be the board member with assigned responsibilities for or particular knowledge about that item. That's kind of nebulous to me.
Sure.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we would particularly select a particular board member, like if I put it now.
Sure. And so I drafted this alone for discussion. This is the first time it's being discussed. And so this, I would imagine, for example, if Chris Chang prepared an item, Christie would lead us through it. That's what I'm thinking about, you know, because we don't need staff people at every single board meeting.
Okay, tonight. Well, we needed. First since tonight. Murphy put together that M three. She weren't here. But since she was here, she spoke on it. So what you're saying is that she didn't have.
I mean, no, no, that, that's a totally different thing. I'm talking about like, like that's a, you know, staff presentation. I'm talking about like if you brought, like very, like Kathleen would be the facilitator on this item, you know, the one before whoever, whoever brought it, you know, like Christie would be the facilitator on the staff one.
I understand, I understand the concept. I understand where you're going with it, but I think it leads to confusion and who, like who's in charge in, in that particular moment, five or 10 minutes of board meeting? Who's in charge? Because the supervisor is moderator, but then you have an item moderator and it's like.
Yeah, unless it were clear or clearly assigned.
I, I, at first I read these, I, I was thinking there was not, it didn't seem to really change much, but the more I read this, the more I'm concerned. I, I'm wondering if we want to table this and make, make some refriments to this and bring it back.
All right. I have one more thing. Are you good? I haven't spoken yet. Okay, thank you. Regarding, let's begin with, I have no favorites on this board, just to let you know. I don't call on somebody more than others. No, I don't. I don't like any of you. Sorry. But I do my best to make it as fair as possible. And yes, I cannot see when somebody raises their hand next to their face. So you, we all have to work together on this. I have called on some, you know, if you present, have something like, actually this that was created, I think by Kathleen Brandt. I called on her to present this, just like I called on everybody else when you have something. With that said, the, the agenda item creator, I suppose. Yeah, I do not punish anyone. I don't say, oh, I'm going to, I favor Jess right now. So Jess, you're going to do whatever you want. And then, no, you can't. It's not, and if it comes across that way, I apologize because I do not do that intentionally. All right. I, okay, and then you just interrupted when I was speaking. So we have these rules of order that are not followed by all of us consistently. And I take offense to it that I am being called out, at least that's how it feels, for how I am not running this properly when all of you interrupt. And you don't wait until you were called on. And here's the thing is that there's statutes here and I'm going to read every one of them. First of all, moderate synonyms, share, facilitate, preside, conduct, oversee, run, manage, supervise, administer, administer, orchestrate, steer, handle, direct, control, govern, navigate, guide, lead. So whatever words you are using for facilitate is really the role of the moderator. I will not allow my duties to be divvied up to other people. And forty one point seven five A, Township Manager and Other Employees Employment and Duties. The Township Board may employ a Township Manager and other employees as are necessary. They shall serve at the pleasure of the Township Board and shall perform duties lawfully directed by the Township Board, except those duties that are delegated by law to another township official unless consent has been granted. Forty one point seven two A, number three, the supervisor, if present, shall be the moderator of a regular or special meeting of the Township Board, which is also, which is also under. Forty one point nine seven, Moderator of the Township Meeting. The supervisor, if present, shall be the moderator of annual or special township meetings of the electors. So it's twice. Duties of the moderator, the moderator of a meeting of the electors shall preside in and regulate the proceedings of a meeting of the electors. He or she shall decide all questions of order and make public declaration of all votes passed. And if a vote is so declared by him or her, shall immediately upon such declaration be questioned. He or she shall make the vote certain by polling the voters or dividing the meeting unless the township by previous voter or the bylaws as otherwise provided. Um, I am still speaking. I am still speaking. Forty one point nine nine, Permission Required to Address Meetings, Request for Silence. A person shall not address a meeting of the electors until permission is obtained from the moderator, nor while any other person is speaking. All persons at a meeting of the electors shall be silent and the requests, at the requests of the moderator.
It's irrelevant.
It's not irrelevant.
Both at the table.
It's a meeting, it's a meeting of the, it's an annual meeting of electors. So statutes are about different types of meetings.
Rules of order.
Both at the table.
I am still speaking. Everyone else had their chance to speak on this item and now it's my turn. Thank you. Robert's Rules of Order, Meeting Process, Call to Order. A member speaks, a member seeks recognition from the chair. And then they have all these other, it just goes right through and then it repeats or motions and whatnot. I am in favor of changing the moderator throughout to make it consistent. And yes, it's true. If the supervisor is not here, then the clerk, the township clerk has, may, or is the, the moderator until the board votes for someone to moderate the meeting. Facilitating items is presentation, discussion and deliberation of the assigned agenda item is that having that person moderate. I am finished for now. Shall we go again? Let's start.
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I was interrupted twice. It does even override somebody currently speaking per our rules. I, I made a motion to table this item.
Under discussion, you're tabling it, just putting it on the table, but not to date certain.
Correct.
Okay, so under discussion.
Trustee Reiser, you were not called to.
I'm sorry.
And I believe that trustee Noel had her hand up.
He did.
My apologies.
A couple of things. John made comments that, you know, this was pointing the finger Jillian's style. And it is. But we need have better and more efficient meetings where there can be frank discussion. And yes, we have all been guilty of interrupting. But in my opinion, you have given the perception of favoritism to some people on the board and been overly harsh on others. That is my perception and that is my reality based on my observations over a period of time. So this is my turn. I wanted to ask Mariah a question. You spent a lot of time talking about how this would be taking away your statutory duties. And John mentioned that too. Do you think anything that's being proposed with this red line version? You know where I'm going with this.
I do, I do.
Would be taking away any of the supervisor's current statutory duties?
I think it has the potential to. I think that it's, it's a very fine line. So I think that there is, there is a, a possible way that you could have item facilitators. But, but it has to be done so delicately that I think that it could really be a problem with overstepping into statutory duties. And, and most of you, any of you who talked to me about this know that I don't recognize because I think it's overly complicated. And I think that it is going to make things more difficult than, than improve anything. Like, but I do, I have, the way I understand it would work might be okay, but I'm not sure that the way would be put in practice would be, I do have concerns about that. You know, so I'll just keep talking. If you're going to table it, I think it makes sense to try to, if, if you still want to investigate this idea, to try to maybe nuance some of that language and see if they can work in a way that isn't overstepping.
So let's.
I, I also want to acknowledge that we haven't discussed much about the idea of fairness or equity. I, I, you know, I, I mentioned, you know, I just crossed out the being called on part because I didn't really know what to do with that. And, and we haven't really talked about that. And I, and I do think we're all guilty of interrupting. I don't think we all go once, but I, I also think that, you know, it's, it's the scoffing, it's the, you know, the looks, it's the body language. It's the absolute nastiness. And, and I, I don't see people being treated evenly by the moderator. And I know you're trying and I appreciate that. And I think some things have gotten better. But in particular, the way that you repeatedly snap at Kathleen is, is just not acceptable. And, and I've seen it for months. And, and even when you like say, like, do you have something new to say that you can finish up? It, it is like that. And that's how it sounds. And so any ideas, you know, while we table, any ideas you have about how we can change that dynamic, I would appreciate.
Okay. Well, thank you, but actually I find that trustee Brandt is very disrespectful to me, not just me, but to other board members. And there's board members that have presented their ideas and she's interrupted them. And it's just constant, receive nasty emails from her. It, yes, I do, and I'm collecting them. So, you know, it's, it's the disrespect and the harassment. And you even told me, called me a fucking bitch in a board meeting that was recorded. So, you know, it's, it's unbelievable, the disrespect. And I am doing my best to be as calm as possible because I don't want to be a nasty person. I can't live my life that way. I am kind. I am thoughtful. And I, that's why the voters voted me in. I started as a nobody. And I do not appreciate being disrespected, especially when 8,803 voters put me here in office to do a job. And just because you may not like me, you may not like who I am or what I represent, but the voters wanted me here. So when you diss me, you diss the voters. And do you have anything new to add to what you stated? Actually, that was advice that was given to me from somebody that's very wise because we have people that take an agenda item and then just keep going on and on and on. And we have to all have our time to speak. So I decided to start at one end or the other and go down and then do it again. And the second time is, do you have anything new to add? Because if you don't and you're just going to say the same thing, then we've already heard it and it's taking up time. None of us like being here till one o'clock in the morning. I know Attorney Fink does, but the rest of us don't. So let's all do our best. You know, I, I go to the Washtenaw County Road Commission meetings, not just for the roads. I know I'm a nerd when it comes to roads. However, Barb Fuller runs a tight ship and they are so efficient. And they get a ton of stuff done. It's amazing. So I go there to watch her and not just her, but the rest of the board and how they run things. It's amazing. It's beautiful. And I suggest that maybe they have it recorded on Zoom. Take a gander.
Yes, trustee Noel.
I've known Barb Fuller for many, many years and we've had coffee. We've talked a lot. Barb Fuller cultivates relationships with the other members of the road commission. So she has one-on-one dialogue with the others. So that there's an ongoing communication between everyone. And. You appear to have chosen to do your own thing. When you're upset with any one of us, it's been different people at different times. And you don't do. Uh, anything I that I can see to foster. Relationships and communication amongst board members. And I know it's hard. And I know, you know, you're frustrated. And just now, when you were talking and you were speaking and directed toward Kathleen. I don't know if you noticed, but you raised your voice. And you sounded angry.
I am angry.
Okay.
I'm I'm not angry, I feel angry. There's a difference.
Okay. But. We're all going to have to work on how we express our anger because when it reaches a certain level. And there's a raised voice and tension and shouting and. I didn't say you shouted this time, but I you have. And. People, it affects people. And you need to take a look at that.
I do, Kathy, I do. And I want to know if everybody else does for themselves, because there's been conversations where you have contacted me to tell me things that are wrong with me. And that's unacceptable.
Well, I.
I don't.
We have hardly talked.
I did not, I do not ask. I I don't give unsolicited advice to people and tell them what's wrong with them. I foster. Relationships with people to help them. Con, yes, I do. And again, see? You you say to me that I interrupt you and you do the same thing. So I help people and to come to solutions. Let's look at the facts. We're here to serve the public and the personalities put aside. But I I'm going to do what I need to do in the part-time position that I'm in. Okay, are we?
Go the question.
Well, there's no question.
That's I made a motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry, just hey, I thought we already voted on it. No, we didn't. Okay, let's.
I had my hand up, but.
I'm sorry, I can't couldn't see you behind.
So I have a couple of points. One. Why did we decide to move from down there up to here? Because when we were down there, we could see each other and you could do a better job of looking. So would it be possible? To go to the format where we're down there and we're not on top of each other and we can kind of. Read the room a little better. So I would ask if that could be done. And then I know that we rotate who votes first. Maybe we could have who speaks first. Other than the mod, when you're when when somebody presents something, they speak first and then. You know, it's whatever it is, it's alphabetical, except who starts and we just kind of do the, it's like you vote first that day. And you speak first that day unless you present something and you don't get to speak again until the seventh person has spoken. So and like, and then. Uh, Gillian can pick on, I don't mean pick on you, pick you. Julie can Gillian can pick you for the next speaker or whatever if she sees you, but it it's really hard. Uh, on this ever so slightly deist. So can we go down there and go to a a rotating way that I would ask that? I don't know if we need a rule change to do that. Uh, but can we can can we? Not be right on top of each other uh uh so much.
I'm going to stay up here in the hall.
No, that's fine. You'll be out of the. Out of the fracas. It'll be safer for you.
Yep, I mean. There's a motion for a tableless. And I reported it and I thought. It gives it time to refine these a little bit. Um, and I think. Maybe take into account John's suggestion. And and that maybe even to the rule of, I don't need, I don't think we need to make where we sit as dual of order. Perhaps this thing about. Who votes first, who speaks first. Well, we wrote in both. But take that into consideration and. Bring it back and when it's next ready. So how can I go?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one more comment, please.
Trustee Brandt.
I'm going to bring this item to our first um work session. Um, I certainly would like to address um. The habit that I see at this board table that for anyone. Uh, of us board members that speaks, the moderator takes the privilege to comment after them. That is a rebuttal. That is not a fair moderation. Because if you're going to take a rebuttal, then I want to rebuttal and then you're going to rebut again. So I'm bringing that uh to our work session that I'm going to. Ask for that be put in there.
May I say something? Yes, I'm calling on myself. Um. Yeah, but also I also noticed that when there is um an agenda item, we have one trustee talking, another trustee talking, then somebody else is talking. And the those are rebuttals to that conversation. So it it's not just me, it's all of you that do that. So if it's going to be a rule, it's going to be a rule because all of us do that, not just because of me.
We're supposed to be a deliverer.
And I would, I want to ask you later how. The previous board when Jack ran the, because if I remember, it wasn't anything like this. It was pretty smooth.
We deliberated and it was actually more casual. And that facilitated more dialogue.
Are there any videos from that time?
Yes, since March of twenty twenty, there are videos.
Was that whom though?
Yes. Please.
Quiet, order. Who is that guy talking?
Okay, um. Well, N four was tabled and are, is there any other comment?
What's next on the agenda?
N five.
Thank you.
Possible action approval of claim for payment for attorney fees related to case. Number two zero two four dash two four five three dash zero eight two eight dash five eight, five FY. FY.
So do you want to facilitate this item or do you want to ask somebody else to facilitate this item?
Well. I have presented the legal fees or the agenda item um based on. Past the past resolution and also the um. I'm sorry, what's what's the name of this? The report that was created by um previous finance manager Rebecca Maudy and also Attorney Think. And it's been, as I said in here, five months. May, June, July, August and September. So I guess. Yeah.
I don't know if you feel comfortable making a motion.
No.
I I would move that we approve the resolution to approve the claim of payment for attorney services as uh. As as proposed. My mic, my mic must not be working because I moved that we uh. Approve a resolution to approve the claim for the payment of attorney services uh as proposed.
Is there support?
So could.
Finish. This is.
Not even to get to discuss, no one will sec, you can vote against it, but.
I don't think we need a motion on the table to discuss, John.
Okay, okay.
I just have a handout. You guys have seen this is exactly what we've seen before. And prior items, this is. This is both the history, this has been in several items, but it's just that. All the actions the board has taken for the days.
There you go.
Yes. Um, Mariah, would you please just um? I mean, I'm I'm familiar with this statement and I've included it in the. Reports a couple of times, but would you just refresh? The board's memory on what the process has been, like what it means for an invoice to appear. On the spreadsheet. Thank you.
Sure. So periodically invoices are emailed to me um from the supervisor. And they are um, it's an invoice from Dykema, the Dykema firm. With their specific costs and then what I would call outside. Attorney costs and that would be um all of the Balada firms invoice. So those. Two things are together, which is why you're not seeing any new invoices under the Balada law section. Um, and up at the top, under the Dykema section. It has um, if you go all the way over to the right, it will say combined invoice and then it will list the Balada portion. So those come, I. Take a look through them and then I put them on this spreadsheet and I send it to Rebecca. That's pretty much it.
But why, why doesn't she pay them?
She has, because the board has to approve the payment. She just puts them up. She just confirms them on this spreadsheet.
So you verify that they appear legit and then you send them to finance? And then it's up to us to allocate money for it?
I don't send the invoices to finance. I I fill out this.
Right.
Statement and it goes to her.
Do you, but you see the invoice.
I see the invoices.
So there's, is it fair to say that there's a presumption that they at least look? Legitimate and appropriate if it makes it to the spreadsheet?
So if if there's a question that I have about, if you look up at the top, there was some some questions early on about.
Right, right, right.
If I have a question, it's listed on this.
Okay, I mean, thank you. So so I asked this board. If we have decided early on to indemnify her. And if we we several of us have seen either on the court or attended in court, we know that these. Attorneys are doing the work, some of us have seen that on YouTube or whatever. Um. Isn't the right thing to do to pay the lawyers for the work that they're doing to represent? Uh, a a a a a member of this board who is alleged to have done something within the course of her employment? Like, what am I missing?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So I assumed that there was going to be. An attempt to discuss the fees. Between Gillian and her legal counsel. And remember, the last time we talked about all this is at the board table, John. You made a comment about a haircut. Exactly. And so. I I was left with the impression that there was an attempt out there. To lower the fees and get a handle on the fees. And that's why, that's what I was waiting for. So I'm, I do have a question for Mariah and who it may be Jessica. What is the total outstanding amount of money that's due? I'm on the wrong page here then.
Oh, no, no, the bottom of that statement, Kathy.
I'm sorry.
But. This forty forty six thousand. It's not ninety thousand.
You looking at old copy potentially?
I don't, maybe I am.
The date is October thirtieth twenty five. Do you see that at the bottom of that spreadsheet? It's in the packet that Gillian included.
Well, it's not, I pulled this from the packet, but okay, okay. So the amount is. Ninety ninety thousand.
Ninety one.
So we we paid one eighty one.
Okay.
And proposed for payment is ninety one. And that's through September.
Yes, through September.
Gillian, has there been any attempt to discuss it with your attorneys?
I don't remember that. I remember Clerk Flintoff stating that Gillian, we only need one invoice. You can have as many attorneys and experts as you need for your case. And. So we've hired experts, forensic experts. To look at all of this, which has taken a a lot of time. I mean, now we have. Without getting into details, which I feel very uncomfortable speaking about this. Yeah, and frankly, we have tried everything. To get this case dismissed. It's unbelievable how this is just going on and on after the evidence that we have presented. So that's where we are. And yes, we have hired um. Experts. And now it's just, as you know, I'm sure that it's been shared, April thirteenth is the pre-trial. Or the, not the pre um.
Your authority. Try day.
Scheduling. Yes, it's a criminal case unless I waive the jury. Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah.
Whatever order we want to do.
No, um. Clerk Flintoff.
So I I handed reminded the board of our actions on this and I will, I will just say I've had the distinct pleasure, maybe the unique position of being. Upsetting both Will and Gillian on this topic. Um, so when I was going to first bring the claim for payment, I remember Will screaming at me. Um, and then I remember um bringing the resolutions for payment and to get it aligned with the statute and and being screamed at. Um, by others. So um. I I I will say I was, I have, was the the champion and wrote this first resolution that's been copied and pasted. Um, and I I think I brought it, what did I bring? Each of the four prior ones, so. I, what I want to say. Um, so what's what's changed, John? And and I think. Nothing. And that's what I didn't anticipate. I I I think we're all, you know. Distraught that this is still going on. You know, we, you know, never should have happened. Um, the charges should have been dismissed. Hey, you know, we don't have control over that. Um, as a board, our our options are aboard is we can assign an attorney. Um, if we want to control costs, that's one option is to assign an attorney. We've all expressed at this board table, we don't want to do that. We want to allow Gillian to pick her attorney, but that's one. One way to, you know, certainly, we we've talked about the reasonableness of the fees. I think it's well established that these fees are um not reasonable by any measure. Um, of what a a criminal case, good criminal defense with all the experts. Um, should cost. And as it goes on and on and on, and and don't forget, we've had our insurance company deny us twice. And and I remember Judy Monk early on saying. You know, surely we we can't be expected to be self-insured. And. And so we took. The action on June twenty fourth. To spend ten thousand dollars on. Robbie Hamawi. Um, and for the purpose of an outside legal review of insurance coverage for these township costs, my understanding is that's. Coming in a, you know, a couple of weeks or so. Coming in a, you know, couple of weeks or so. Um, I'll be interested to see that and I'm hopeful, but. Um, short of that, I don't believe there's any way the township's going to recover. Um, any of these costs and I, I do think that. You know, our, I do think it's, it's the, the right thing to do. Um, to cover fees, but these fees are unreasonable and they appear to be. Um, unending. And I just don't think, I, I don't believe that if, if this were put to a vote of the people, I don't believe that they would support. Unending legal expenses for any one of us. And so without, where is the control? What, what can be done? I hope there can be a haircut. I loved your idea last time. You'd suggested a haircut. It's not your haircut to make.
Yeah.
But, but it was a great idea. Um. And, and I, and we have been balancing this. Do we assign an attorney? To represent the supervisor? Can the, these costs come down, but just there seems to be. You know, no, no end in sight to these costs. They're, they are astronomical. And, um, we, we've gotta get some sort of, um, control and I don't know how to do it.
Well, if you notice. I don't know if I can see this, um.
See this or say this?
See this, see.
Turn your mic on.
It is a. Please, from the peanut gallery.
Is this spreadsheet?
Yeah, which is.
So specific one.
This is old. This isn't right.
Here's the most recent one.
Yeah, if you notice, from nine-one to ten-one, the charge was two thousand two hundred and forty and that's only because. My attorney and I had to go to court. Um, not just because there was. Other things, but it's dropped way down because most of the work is done. And it's a waiting game. There's some couple of more ideas for. Couple, which I can't share.
Next steps. So, so can I ask Jessica and others? What's the right thing to do by way of supporting? Jillian in her defense and getting these guys paid. Do we, do we say, do we, do we, we have. Christie reach out to the law firm and say, hey, listen, we need to talk about this.
No, that wouldn't be.
Well, did we have? One of us do it?
No.
We, we have, like, like, who's?
J- the, they're Jillian's bills. Jillian is the client. We are reimbursing Jillian.
Well, we're real, we're really not at this juncture.
No, we really are. We're really paying, these are claims from Jillian to Jillian and, and I'm just trying to be clear. We've talked about this before. Jillian has selected her counsel and that is her right. You know, and, and that's, it's her relationship with the attorneys, which is why Mariah doesn't even share them with finance. I mean, I, unless Jillian had. You know, unless Jillian consented, if you had, you know, something. To pitch, I don't think it would be appropriate for any of us to talk to them. I mean, certainly, they, they, they know that this board has expressed. Concerns about this. Case going on and on and on and the high, high hourly costs. I mean, it's, it's astronomical and, and you have enough experience to know. How wildly out of range. These, um, fees are, even for the best.
I'm not willing to agree to that because I don't know enough about that. I'm not saying they're, I, I, I appreciate that. I, but you know, I, I, I'm not. I'm not down with the fact that these are wildly inappropriate fees, just for the record.
Okay.
Are they higher than what we pay other attorneys? Yes. Are, are they, I, I appreciate that they're higher. Uh, but maybe the defense she's getting is greater. And maybe they're doing more for her defense. So I'm not willing, I don't, I'm not making a qualitative judgment on how much they're charging. Vis a vis what they're providing for her. My point is like. Is this gonna go on? And I don't, I'm not getting paid until they sue us?
What would they sue us for, John?
For.
What in the world? We have no obligation.
There's no engagement with them.
What are you talking about?
Well, didn't we have a policy and didn't we pronounce the resolution that we were going to indemnify her?
No. I mean, we, we did and we are, but, and Rob, please, the gasping. Um, the, the, I mean, it's melodrama. And, and John, we, we have passed the resolutions we have passed, but there isn't. To, to my knowledge, I mean, we, we are trying, trying. To figure out how to get these costs to be reasonable. We have options. We can assign an attorney. We have said we don't want to do that. She has started with the attorney she has selected. We have all said. We don't want to disrupt. That. But unless you pass the resolution that I'm unaware of. We've passed the resolutions we've passed.
No, I.
And they agree very, they agree very similarly to the one that's before you.
It sounds like my. Uh, motion is gonna die for lack of a second and even if it were to get a second, it would certainly die for lack of a majority. So, so where does that put us vis a vis defending? Uh, our supervisor and. Uh, seeing to it that the lawyers who have defended her get compensated for their work.
We need a solution.
And, and, and how, how, how does that happen? Does one come out of the air or does somebody call them and say, hey, guys? Do you mind, can we, can we talk about this bill? I mean, how, 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 how?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How, how, how do we make, how do we make, I, I really appreciate. Uh, the trustees' concerns about the, the amount that we're being charged for this and how much it's costing. I really do. Because I appreciate, I, I know that Trustee Brett in the past has provided. D- d- data from the State Bar of Michigan regarding how much. Certain attorneys get paid in various. Localities for the types of work. So I, I appreciate that this is on the, on the high side of things, but, but. Complaining about how much they're charging. Isn't really getting us anywhere.
Correct.
And how do we get somewhere?
Trustee, oh, who have every question?
Mr. Trustee Brand. I'm just gonna give a little history. Um, in February. This year, myself. Treasurer. Yaple. Former trustee Monk attempted. To discuss this with the supervisor to get to reasonable fees. We attempted. Um. Everything was categorically denied. There, there was no. There was no. Discussion about how some costs. How we could get to reasonable. I, I like the idea of reasonable because that's the standard that will be applied. Um, so that was February. And pretty much. Denied. Then in July. I brought forward the information which was newly acquired. That. Mark Chukow from Dykema had agreed to stop involvement. Um. That's on his letterhead. That's his information. That's all I have. He was bowing out. I brought that up because anything he charges is not reasonable. By his own admission, it's not reasonable. Then I brought. The survey from the State Bar of Michigan. I gave it to all of you. That does talk about fees and this is how reasonableness is determined. So this is a valid. Um, guideline. Any resident I speak to about this. Um, is astounded at the hourly rates. They are absolutely flabbergasted. And there seems to be no end. And then. On May the thirteenth of this year. During. Judge. Simpson's hearing. It was stated. That. There was an offer for alternate resolution. I have the transcript from that. I'll share it with you folks. So that was clear. There was an offer in May. And then. In October. It states. And this is from. Judge Conlon. It states on October the sixth that. Let me read the stipulation to adjourn pre-trial hearing. It is hereby stipulated and agreed by the parties. Through their respective council of record. That the pre-trial hearing in the above case currently scheduled for Wednesday. This was written on a Monday, agreed by the parties. Will it be adjourned until October twenty-second? The reason for the adjournment is to allow time. For a scheduled event to occur, occur on October the eighth. Which may lead to a resolution of this case. So it seems there's been two offers. To try to settle this. Um, don't know, I don't want to hear anything about defense or rationale. But. This is going on and it seems to be. In my interpretation, let me give you that. That too. Sorry.
Thank you.
There's, there's been made, offers made. Um, to settle this. And there's been no attempt to try to get reasonable costs. None whatsoever. And any resident I talk to is not supportive of this. It's their tax dollar that we have to. Decide how they're spent. This is not, not. It's not good for CIO Township to have unlimited. Extremely expensive attorney costs with. Zero. That I can see. Um, commitment to try to. Manage these costs in a more reasonable way.
May I speak? Or do, anybody, anybody else?
Well, I mean, I already spoke, I, but. I have concerns about the costs. And I, I'm wondering if. You. Could talk to your attorneys and see. If they're. Open to the consideration of some kind of reduction.
I, I will speak to them about that.
Okay.
Um, great. I do need to say, however, um. Based on the Mark Chukow bowing out email, I have asked for that email because I went through my emails and I don't have that. And there's this email that everybody, I don't, not everybody, but some people are talking about. And when I asked for it, they refused to give it to me. So to me, that's just hearsay. And even though other board members supposedly had seen it, but I think it's very strange that the person that's involved is not allowed to see that email. But it's been shared with others. So Mark has never said he was bowing out. I do not have that. He said that he was going to back up or back off. So Michael, who charges less? Balada. So that's all I know and that's the, the emails I have. Um, and residents, when I talk to residents, they're appalled that I am going through this. That every morning I wake up and I'm like, I'm in a different reality. That I can't believe I'm actually going through this nightmare. And every morning I wake up hoping or thinking that, oh, that was just a dream. It's not. It's been awful and you have no idea what I have been through, nor do you know what these alternative resolutions are and what. I'm not even gonna go there, but. They're not acceptable. And I really take offense to like, oh, well, you didn't take this offer. I am innocent and I will no way ever say that I am guilty or even plead as something that is. Remotely guilty because I am innocent. I didn't do what I was accused of and there's evidence to prove it. And I can't help that the courts refuse to look at that. You just have no idea. And Kathy Noel, you had said to me once, Jillian, I just, if I was in your position, you're handling this so well. If I was in your position, I wouldn't be able to handle it as well as you. You had said that a couple of different times. You have no idea what a fucking nightmare this is. You don't need to put that into the, um, record, Cheryl, that I said the F-word. Um. Please. So yes. I will talk with my attorneys and we have been doing a great job and believe me, my life. How many hours I have put into research on my own and provided to my attorneys so they don't charge us. They. Normal, normally they would. And they don't charge for everything either. You, if you saw my office at home, it is plastered with paperwork that still needs to be organized. My desk, it's all it is, is this case. And actually. I feel kind of honored that two high-powered attorneys. Complement me on my research skills and the things that I have found. So that's a little bright light in all of this that, oh, I have a talent, but I wish that this talent had never. Had to be used in something like this. I will talk to my attorneys. Which I haven't talked with them since October twenty-second. I'm clerk Flintoff.
Yeah, I just want to say, Jillian, as I've said before, since day one, this never should have happened. Um, but, you know, it. I, I just, and it is your right. To, um, you know, take the, the, the strategy to resolution that you want to take and I respect that. Um, I, I don't think anybody should, um, plead guilty to anything they didn't do. I think the, um, reality though is sometimes there's also de- deals that are about dropping charges. And I think that what's in the interest of the township. Is for this. To end. Um, we all wanted these charges to be dropped. Um, you know, yesterday. It never should have happened. Um, it should stop. It's, it's out of our control, but. What's. I, what I can't just sit, sit by, I, I, I have to say that. You know, it, it's not the obligation of the township to endlessly reimburse. For criminal defense. It's, it's just not. And, um. I, you know, we have. Provided the option for you to select your attorney and we are trying to support that. Our other option. Is to select an attorney, which clearly would be disruptive and problematic in its own way. So, I mean, there, there's no good options. I appreciate you talking to your attorneys. Um, I appreciate. That the board has paid ten thousand more dollars for the Hamawi determination, but after that, we're gonna have all the information we need to know about. Any possibility of the township ever recouping these funds, which is. You know, probably not, never gonna happen.
Thank you. Um, so yes, uh, Terry Hamawi asked for three more documents. I provide those to him. On Monday, I expect there to be a. Opinion that I can discuss with the board in closed session on our next meeting, hopefully. Um. I, I also have some, some deep concerns on the costs here. I mean, I, I see. I, I watched the live hearing, uh, in Judge Simpson's court that. in Judge Simpson's court that Trustee Brandt provided the transcript of. I now see that there was another conversation between the parties. I, I, I just have a lot of concerns here. I've been threatened, you know, that this is going to end up in litigation. I don't want to go there. You know, that this, this just has, at some point, we just have to stop. And this is the point I'm at, that three hundred thousand dollars and we're not even at trial yet is just, it's too much. It's too much. Thank you.
The other hands?
So my motion fails for lack of a second.
Yep, you've noted that three times. It will be clearly reflected in the record.
I mean, that's,
Yep.
I guess, that, 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 that's. I move to adjourn after public comment. Well, I move to adjourn after public comment. It's eleven twenty.
I'll second that. So,
Gone into close.
Well, just.
Yeah, but we don't have to go into closed session if we adjourn.
Okay, so. No, I'm, I'm still flabbergasted that these attorney fees aren't going to be paid.
It sounds like you're going to talk to your attorneys and, and we're going to get information about the insurance company.
Okay, so there was,
Motion by Riser, support by Carrie to adjourn.
The motion after public comment.
Yeah.
Yep. All in favor, or all in favor, say aye.
In favor of what?
To, to adjourn.
To adjourn after public comments. Skipping over our last item on the agenda, which is the attorney client.
I'd request a roll call.
I'd request a roll call. Okay, so there's a motion to end the meeting now, before done with the agenda. A motion by Riser, support by Carrie, move to adjourn after public comment. Carrie?
Yes.
Yapel?
No.
Flintoff? No. Brandt?
No.
Noel?
No.
Reed? Riser?
Yes.
Motion fails two to five.
So this closed session is very important that we have to do that tonight?
Yes.
At eleven thirty?
I would make a motion to go, apologize, I don't have it in front of me. I would make a motion to go into closed session to consult with our attorney about material exempt from state or federal disclosure as permitted under MCL fifteen point two six eight.
Support with one question. Can we let the deputy go home? Okay.
Lieutenant Kratz and Bird.
You don't have to say if you don't want to while we go into closed session, but you're welcome to stay. Okay. Okay. He has public comment.
Oh, okay.
So there's material that we're going to be going over in the close session?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to call the motion? To go into closed session?
Oh, um, do you have it in front of you?
I support.
Oh, so I have a motion by Flintoff, support by Yapel to go into closed session. Just need to call for the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. We, we will be going into the other room.
Yep.
For me?
Is there a motion to come back to open session?
Moved. Court?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Reed and who supported?
Mine's.
Thank you.
I move the resolution on board of trustees FOIA appeal process that was distributed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, could we, we need to do a roll call?
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Why do we need to do a roll?
Uh, it says on the resolution.
Carrie?
No.
Yapel?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yep.
Resolution adopted, six to one. Set a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. John moved it before.
Oh, we have public comment.
Yeah. Anyone present, please come to the.
Sorry, sorry to the public.
Thanks to Chair Kratzberg, thanks for waiting for us.
Yep, sorry, my knee locks up after sitting too long. Um, I wanted a couple of quick things or questions that I just want to bring up real quick. One, I was just informed, I guess you guys came up with the contract or wanted to do a contract with us for these meetings?
That's what I heard.
Who said that?
Well, we, we had the agenda item last time.
The, yeah, my, the agenda item was just to do it under the current contract.
Contract, correct.
Yeah.
Sure. We have the option of either just doing under, under the current contract as overtime or having a special contract. And we've not chosen to do a special contract.
Okay. I guess I'm just looking for direction that this is going to get filled for every board meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Because I have obligations within the con, our contract, labor contract that I have to post and then et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm one word together. Um, and then I just wanted to touch base on our station and the walls.
Yeah.
And winter's coming. And if you guys don't mind us running the heat of eighty to keep the building warm, run it at eighty, but it's going to get cold again this year.
And I just want to say, I apologize on behalf of the township that this project has been delayed so long. I don't know all of the reasons. It's been in our capital plan. It's part of why I want us to stay focused on our projects. Christie, do you have any insight into this? I know the chief was having, managing it for a while, was having trouble with the contractor. I think Ryan and Christie were looking for some other contractors. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then, Brandon, they're also trying to find the excavation expense was like really high, so.
Forty-five thousand dollars to dig up sixty feet of parking lot, which.
Yeah.
I, I'm seeing if there's anything we can do to do this internally within the building and manage the exterior part of the plumbing next year.
Brandon's out until Monday, but it's when he gets back, I'll sit down with him and then we'll get with you and we can, we can all meet and kind of go wherever we're at.
And then, just the last topic is kind of around the building is, maybe if we can sit down, I don't know who I have to sit down and talk to about maybe some additional lighting outside, um, just to make it a little bit brighter.
You can meet with Christie.
Yes.
An officer safety issue for us.
Sure.
And then, cameras.
Yes.
One of the only buildings that I think is the only substation that we have that does not have cameras or some, at least one camera. Um, and I know I, I can't remember who I talked to, but I thought I talked to somebody previously that.
I, I have a quote that, we can talk about that when we meet. It's already in the.
Any cameras around your building as well?
It's already in the works, so.
I think it was, I think we talked at elections last year about cameras.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Christie's in.
Christie, I, I think that'll be part of the capital plan as well as the sheriff's. But, but maybe we could get an update on this sheriff's renovation because it is, it is over a year overdue, so.
I do, actually.
Yeah, and the cameras have been talked about for a long time. And if we're talking about safety, this needs to be done yesterday.
Right, we were waiting to get the infrastructure in for the network.
Yeah, we had to get the network done first.
For the cameras.
I'm still relatively new to this side of the.
No, you're, thank you. Your comments are valid, so.
Trying to figure out what, uh, what's going on, what's not going on.
Sure.
Who I need to poke the, poke the bear.
Yeah.
Sure.
Hey, thanks for coming and have a great morning driving home.
I got to be back in six hours. It's going to be a short sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, since I'm not your president, uh, Jess, thank you for once again having another smooth election. You have set the standard in style, uh, and I think probably in the county, this was election. They're always well done. Those kudos to you. And yes, please develop a wastewater treatment plant policy. Uh, heritage was a massive mistake. Uh, you headed off the KFC thing. Thank you for doing that. And now it looks like it's going to be an issue again at this new community. So Nikki started on Monday. We lost Rebecca. Will we now finally start adding some finance staff so that they're not overwhelmed the way Rebecca was for five or six years?
Yeah, expect to have something before the board on the twenty-fifth.
Well, the, the, going back to the manager, the director, the manager's staff sort of, are we going to replace Rebecca?
New word response after.
Thank you, David, for your comments about the, um, about the Nats. Uh, you have a lot of experience in style. You have a calm, cool and collected approach. You have a consensus building approach. You have all of wisdom. And we have strong voices on this board. And I look forward to more of your strong voice on this floor. We need that sort of wisdom on the board and I hope you speak up more often and show that sort of leadership. Kathleen, I don't understand your position on the fifteen percent of admin. Um, I don't think that the fifteen percent applies to all salaries. How are we supposed to continue preserving, maintaining and improving the parks, preserves and pathways? Uh, that takes work. Otherwise, we have a stagnant Parks Department. And residents certainly vote for stagnant. Um, Kathy, you made a comment, uh, during the moderator discussion about we need better and more efficient meetings. Amen to that. That's never been a priority. But then you, uh, experienced Jillian as harsh. Um, and what about Hathaway? Hathaway was a very controversial, contentious supervisor. And there seems to be a little difference there in your opinion between Hathaway as a male supervisor and Jillian as a female supervisor. And unfortunately, uh, you said that and, but didn't say anything about Kathleen laughing, literally laughing in Jillian's face when she was talking about harassment and the way you treated Jillian. And you said nothing to, about Kathleen's behavior. So focusing on Jillian's behavior while completely ignoring Kathleen's behavior, I think is unfair by all of you. Jessica, you had the same phone. And Jess, you, uh, said you assigned absolute nastiness to Jillian. That is completely unfair. All of you have behaved horribly the last year. We've needed a lot more professionalism, a lot more honesty and integrity. And I think all of you have a lot of work to do. And then on the last item tonight on, uh, paying Jillian's legal fees. If any of the, if one of the other few was in this kind of trouble, I think you would be paying those fees. I think it's because it's Jillian that you have decided that the issue here is to add more stress to Jillian. And I can't imagine the stress she's under fighting for her life in court and knowing that her colleagues, the people she works with, uh, are undermining her ability to defend herself by trying to not pay her legally. And remember, the ordinance, the law you're operating under in this case said shall pay for her indemnification. It's not the may pay that you changed it to. And that's what you're trying to do is find a way to not pay her fees. But the law says you shall pay. Yes, it's expensive. Surprise, surprise.
Thank you, Rob.
Lastly, Kathy, Kathleen, Brian, Jessica, David, you should be ashamed of yourself for not seconding and voting to pay her fees and to take that stress off. That was very poorly done.
Thank you, Rob. Board comment?
Uh.
Or Flintoff?
Look, hold on.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about.
Yeah. First up is Caroline Elmore, followed by Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Caroline.
You don't.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, no, we can't hear you. The volume turned on?
I can come back, um. Caroline, we'll come back to you. Pam Boyd, go ahead, please.
Pam Boyd. Kathy, let's start with you. So you mentioned the road commission and how they foster relationships. I went to the road commission meetings for two years. You're right, they do foster relationships with each other. But you know what? Wow. Uh, do you remember January sixth, cutting down Jillian, uh, because she was learning on the job? And you, gang of four, um, went after her and started taking jobs away from her before she even had a chance to really learn them. Um, when you foster goodwill, it will grow. But when you cut people's legs off, it doesn't. It gets, it, 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 it doesn't foster goodwill. Um, you have created, you, gang of four, have created an environment that you are now living in. And it is undermining the, this board's ability to get along. You four are to blame for this. Now, Jessica, when you sued the township and lost twice, you know, you had an attorney and nobody told you, that I'm aware of, that, you know, you shouldn't be doing this or you shouldn't be doing that. Um, it was also not a federal case like Jillian's. Jillian's case is in court. Due to the ineptitude of this very township that you five are refusing to pay her fees is disgusting. Kathleen, if you were to tell the complete story to residents, I bet most would agree the township needs to pay her legal fees. Jessica, you say there's no end in sight, but there is. You're wrong. You're wrong. You're wrong. You're wrong. It will now go before a jury and based on the evidence already presented, it should be done pretty quickly. And you know what? One attorney has given the other attorney, who's a little bit less expensive, more of a headway so that, um, he could help Jillian save fees. And Jillian said tonight that she has provided hours of research to help the case so that her attorneys didn't have to do that. So there are two instances of where she has helped to cut down on the fees. So, um, to, to lower costs. So, so I am just so disgusted at you. So disgusted at this board. Thank you, Riser, for, for standing up. And, um, you all disgust me.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Pam. Caroline, did you want us to be?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so where do I even begin? Uh, let's start with the whole ridiculous moderator debate. Mariah said it would have had to be done delicately and I don't see how this can be done considering that this board operates with sledgehammers. So that becomes pretty much a moot point. And Kathleen, I'm going to second what other people have commented. Your behavior during the entire discussion with you was the epitome to me of what's wrong with this board. Waving your hand like a schoolgirl and laughing out loud at others. What a shining example of professionalism you are. If you get my sarcasm, you are the embarrassment. Now to the attorney bills. I was starting to write this in a letter and I wrote it in all caps because I am that mad at how hypocritical you all are. One side of your mouth saying, poor Jillian, you've been done wrong. And then, oh, but then we can't pay your bills anymore. One side of your mouth saying, poor Jillian, you've been done wrong. And then, oh, but then we can't pay your bills anymore. What the actual FK? Are you lying about her being innocent? If you're not, then how the hell can you say, oh, well, best of luck? These are felony charges, major fines and jail time. And I heard Jessica say something about settling. Yes, you did, Jessica. Just what the hell are you talking about? That Jillian should take some kind of plea deal? I don't know how you can look at yourself in the mirror and think that. And Kathleen, I have no idea just who the hell you are speaking to about these fees. The many residents I speak to are devastated by these proceedings and outraged at the prosecutor's office and want Jillian to win. So get off your high horse. Yours are not the gold standards for ideas, thoughts and information, not by far. You have a lot of nerve suggesting actions when you're not even an attorney. The real tragedy is the idiot Hathaway that caused all this. He's the criminal. I just don't know how you all sleep at night with all your manipulating and undermining. Like Pam said, you just. The four of you just make me sick. I'm just sickened by y'all. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Caroline.
Thanks, Caroline.
Uh, there are no other hands raised. Is there a motion to adjourn at twelve, oh, three or four or five? Whoever I can't see.
No, I would say you're.
So moved.
I'm so.
All in favor, say aye.
Getting this adjourned.